All right, good evening, everybody. It's July fifteenth, Monday at 6:00 PM, which is shortly after. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Go ahead and we have forum tonight, and we're gonna start by saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as I said, we already have a forum with Sarah online. Do you know her?
No, she's not.
Give me just one second, I'll pull up Teams and if it lets me on. Okay, looks like we got Sarah online now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Sarah, can you hear us? Sarah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, good. Okay, we have a full house tonight, Sarah's attending virtually. We'll go ahead and start the meeting. Everybody should have received a copy of the regular agenda. Do you have any changes for the regular agenda?
No.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Yeah, we made the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Rachel's seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, carries. We have consent agenda for tonight, vendor invoices, balance sheets, and checks written. Everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda if there is no further topics.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I got a motion. Do I got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I got a second, a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. We have the meetings from, or meeting minutes from July first. Is there way, had a chance to read through those?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes if there is no objections.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July first.
Okay, do I got a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, Sarah can have it.
Okay, fair enough. Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 carries. Number six, we got public comment. See, I may got a comment I wanna make for tonight.
I have a comment on agenda item fourteen, or fifteen, but you, would you prefer I just wait until I tell that agenda item?
Tell that item, yes. Okay. Anybody else?
Good evening, Luke Hagman, eighty-eight forty Northern Lights Avenue. Not on the agenda tonight, but in an effort to drive home the point from our meeting two weeks ago, I have supporting documentation, just an objection to the sidewalk issue on the pond, so I wanted to share that with you so you kinda understand the gravity of how we feel, so if I may pass this.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
There's seven copies, so one person.
Thank you.
Mike, sir. Sure.
Thank you, Luke.
I got two ladders, so it's tough, you can share amongst yourselves.
Okay, was that all, sir?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Once, twice. Okay, we'll move on to the sheriff's update, item number seven. Mr. Johnner.
Yes.
Thank you for coming tonight.
I'm Mr. Mayor, members of the council, appreciate your attendance here, our residents, of course. I don't have any updates on calls for service for, for the, for the month. I'll let Carson Quan, Deputy Keller take care of that, but here to answer any questions, if anyone has any questions on the issue that we had with the gate being closed, I'm not sure if anyone else has.
We have a microphone, I can't hear them.
Oh, yep, sorry about that.
Jeff, you could try turning that.
I can talk into this. Can you hear me better now?
Is that any better, sir, or not?
Can you hear me any better now?
Not much.
I'll try to talk loud then, so. So I didn't know if anyone had questions on that at all, obviously, just to kinda give a little background on when you guys discussed that at the last meeting. Brenton had reached out to me, I believe it was either the day before or the day of the, the meeting, asking if I could be here. I was on vacation that week, so I wasn't able to be here, so I apologize for that. Obviously, there was a lot of discussion over the gate, so I didn't know if we had any residents here tonight, if council members had any questions for, for me as the sheriff, and, and how we would move forward with handling that situation as the sheriff's office, or if there's any citizens here, I would certainly welcome any questions or concerns or anything from any of our citizens, I guess, since, since that time I've met with Mayor Trudeau and, and Brenton, and we discussed some potential solutions. I saw that you had one here on the agenda coming up, which is looking at potentially putting up a stop sign in that area, which could help with some traffic flow issues, potentially. And so, other than that, I guess we had just visited, and our, our efforts as the sheriff's office, obviously, we, we can't close that gate based on state law, state statutory law. I know that where there's a number of issues that we're dealing with down here as far as traffic is concerned and the growth of the area, and the best thing that we can do in that area right now is just do extra enforcement, which we've definitely stepped up as far as getting people out there to monitor the traffic flows, the, the truck traffic through there. I know that was a concern of, of Jeff's and probably other people on the, on the council as well, so we've had our truck regulatory person up there monitoring some of that, and then just some extra patrol efforts, so we'll continue with those as we move forward until we can, can work through that situation and maybe get some roads open, but I would take any questions from, from the council, if anyone has any for me, or any concerns, any ideas, or if any residents have any questions for me.
I appreciate your presence out there.
Sure.
You're quite invisible.
Yeah, do, how many, do, do we have residents that live down there? Okay, are most of you here to discuss that concern here this evening, or?
I know what the plan is.
Okay, yeah.
If it, if it is indefinite.
Just gonna step this way.
Status is there, sorry, I should know that.
Nope, nope, that's, that's why I wanted to come down here, obviously, as, as the sheriff. We wanna make sure that we're able to help all that we can. We, obviously, there's state statutes in place for roads and blocking those and what the state law says, we can't legally do that, and like I said, I definitely understand the concern of the additional traffic through that area, so we'll, we'll continue to step up efforts through there. If you guys, you know, feel free to call us at any point if you, if you have any different ideas on anything that we could do as far as enforcement, but, yep.
Is, is there a, a safety type guideline thing for studies, you know, for benefiting one safety if you are recreating two or three more safety?
Sure.
One at a weight, the other sorts?
Yep, do you have a specific one in mind that you're thinking of, like?
Well, if our gates open, I, I get it, these people gotta drive somewhere.
Yeah.
We're, we're solving somewhat of a problem for, for pre-purposes, this and that, but are we creating three more problems with pedestrians on the street and?
Safety to them and stuff like that.
Safety concerns on that side of it.
Yeah, that's definitely, you know, we want, we wanna evaluate the, the safety considerations from all aspects, from a three hundred and sixty degree perspective. I did bring Tom down here, he's one of our county engineers, and he, he's the road guy, right? So there's been times where people have said to me, hey, we need to raise the speed limit on this road, or we need to reduce it, and I don't have the authority, even as the sheriff, to do that, I can give my input, but it really comes down to engineering concerns, how it puts the width of the road and the speeds that it can handle. He knows that, he's an engineer, I went to school for enforcement, I'm not as smart as him, so, but I, certainly, we wanna evaluate those, so when our guys are up in that area, that's one thing I've asked them to do, was just monitor everything that's going on there. That's why when I met with, with Mayor Trudeau, we obviously brought up some good, good issues with trucks going through there, and those roads probably not being able to handle that, right? And if we're doing that constantly, then the road starts getting jeopardized and wrecked, and then we all know, 'cause I know living in West Fargo, taxes go up, specials go up, I live on a busy street, and I've been hit with that a couple times, so I certainly understand those, those perspectives. So that's why we send our truck guy up there, 'cause we wanna make sure that people aren't using that, driving through that area at heavy weights, right? Because then those roads are gonna get wrecked, and then, much like you said, then we start getting bumps in the road, and then we end up with other safety considerations, 'cause people can't operate at normal speeds and...
Where your truck regular, regulatory guy sits? That's where you're, he sits in a good spot.
Okay.
He backs in on the end there, anybody who's pulling in, he backs in.
Okay, I'll tell him to talk.
They're, they're not quite as exposed, you won't see them all the way down the block if they're driving.
Sure, yeah, I'll tell him to visit with them then. Some other things that we could potentially do is, I know sometimes this works, sometimes it doesn't, you know, radar trailer out there, and that kinda helps remind people, and, you know, we, we don't wanna, I don't ask, the sheriff don't want it as a free-for-all, but much like you guys had concerns, then I started getting calls from residents in West Fargo, you know, saying that they wanted it open, so I'm getting things from both sides, and so we wanted, we, number one, the first thing we gotta do is make sure that we follow the law. As, as a law enforcement agency, we gotta follow the laws, and we can only enforce rule law. If we wanna change those laws, and there's something that someone has an idea that we could do better, I'm always willing to ask the sheriff, I've done it a number of times since I've been elected, to propose things out at the legislative session, we got one coming up again here in January, and if someone thinks we can do something better, or maybe make a legislative change to change things, as long as it benefits a number of people and it's a safety thing, I'm always willing to look at those things and help them lobby for that. So there's just a number of things that we could look at.
I got a stop coming across from the West Fargo side, coming into the north side of it, into Greyhound, by the West Fargo place, there was two officers there, and I didn't stop at the stop sign all the way, there was a rolling stop. There's mad on that side, the people that live around that road is we around.
For, for the, for the traffic flow.
Yeah, for the traffic.
Yep.
They, they don't want it, the people that live in that, because it was a dead end, now it's a main street down there. They do not like it, as much as we don't like it, you know?
No, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that information, but I have to sit with them a little bit. Yep.
Is there a way that we can increase enforcement if schools start? There's a lot of young, under, you know, teenage drivers driving through the neighborhood so they can get through schools.
Sure.
They're not as experienced, they're not paying attention, I have young children without training, I really want that enforcement, but is there a way to monitor those?
Yep, yep, we could definitely increase that. I would just need to know kind of a concentrated time, so we know there's an additional resources and everything. Forrest is somewhat unique in the fact that the, the city contracts with the sheriff's office, so I'm not sure if all of you guys know what that means, but as the sheriff's office, right, we have jurisdiction over the whole county, and the majority of my deputies are all patrolling the whole county, which is one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square miles, we've got two hundred and seventy-six in Cass County, right? So it's a big county, a lot of, a lot of cities, I twenty-seven includes Fargo and West Fargo. We don't do a lot of enforcement in Fargo and West Fargo, we can, but I don't concentrate our efforts in Fargo or West Fargo, right, 'cause they're lucky enough to have a tax base to have the one police department, and if we don't come out here, then they'll come out here, 'cause we're gonna have jurisdiction over them. So I try to concentrate our efforts on a day-to-day basis out in the rural areas. Gotta get super busy in Fargo and they have a major incident or something like that, and they call for assistance, and I send a couple units in there to help them as well, because they pay county taxes as well in Fargo and West Fargo, so we almost make sure that we're servicing everyone. The city of Forrest contracts with the sheriff's office to have two people down here, two and a half people, excuse me, and so it's a little bit luckier of an area to get to do a little bit more concentration. So all I need to know is just kind of the time, and then I can send some extra people here, besides the one that's down here, which is friendly, so that we can just address all the traffic concerns around the whole county, 'cause we have a lot of them. I've got a whole list of traffic complaints throughout the whole county that we travel for as much as we can.
I would say it's probably the traffic in our lawn, between the four and six is probably the highest.
So when schools need to help, not in Fargo?
Yeah. Coming down from.
Yeah.
It's not the people that live in the neighborhood speeding through it either, is what I've noticed.
No, it's, it's the people that live in the neighborhood.
Brings up a good point, 'cause we've gone to areas and worked extra enforcement, and then we found out it was kind of people that were...
Well, I, I drive slower when you're around too, so.
Probably not me, 'cause I, I get stuck in the office, I'd like to be out.
I own your trucks and I hit the brakes, I'll be honest.
I, I drive in unmarked in Tahoe, so if you see that, I'll, that's me, though. But anyways, go ahead.
Is there something that can be done along Sixty-fourth where they're building that new home, the fire department on both sides? I think you just pick one side, 'cause there's a lot of times you meet in traffic, the other day with the tracker couldn't even get through.
Yeah, it's pretty narrow there.
And it seems like it's been going on forever.
Okay.
They gotta be getting close.
Sixty-fourth and like, give me an area.
Uh, just west of the roundabout. Just west of the roundabout.
Okay.
And who else is being built on the south side of the road.
Yep.
And just the traffic there, then you got eighteen cars parked on both sides of the road, it gets a little congested.
Okay, I'll have to go look at it. Is it in, is that area in the city?
Yeah, it's right before you get to Greyhound.
Okay, so we probably have to look at, I don't know if there are other parking signs up in that area, Brenton?
We'd have to look at it.
No, there is no parking sign.
Okay, so that would be the first thing off the...
I don't care if anybody knows, just pick one side or the other, but they're kinda crowding in and...
That would be something that we would work together with the city on, because that would be an expense for the city to put up parking signs, so that we can enforce it then?
Yeah, I was just thinking, we talked to builders, the contractors. The contractors.
Oh, the contractors, okay.
Yeah, it's not the residents.
So if there's no parking signage put up on a city road, then we bring those to council, so they could identify one side, both sides, where, so we typically vet that through agenda item with the council, so.
We'll, 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 we'll monitor that area, since you brought it up too, for sure, and, and just kinda see and work together and help the solution. So I think that eventually we're gonna talk about the signs, so maybe I don't wanna hold you here all meeting, and take all your time.
I do wanna ask one question. We talked about proper detour signs, or lack thereof, prior to construction, and that wasn't addressed yet. Do we have any detour signs coming up at all in West Fargo, as to where traffic is supposed to flow?
I mean, they're all over the place, they're, they're marked per plan where the signs are, and so they are, they are up, I guess, whether or not people look at them or pay attention, I guess, is, is maybe another issue, I guess, so, but they're, the signs that were, that were drawn up for plan, I guess, and, and it is kind of the duty every once in a while, just to check those and make sure they're up and, and it makes sense, too, so. You know, just to vote that project there, actually, is a city of Fargo project, they're helping us with that roundabout, so they're kind of managing the whole thing, so it's up to those guys to kinda, to kinda monitor that, the signage, and how things are progressing as the project moves along.
So is Fargo's responsibility to put the signs on the West Fargo side?
It's part of that contract, yeah, it's part of that contract, for the, for the detours, for, for the roundabout and for Fifty-second Avenue and for the bridge, it's all, it's all one big contract. We did the stuff last year from the roundabout south, and then now they're doing the stuff this year from the roundabout bridge, and then the stuff east. We started on the bridge, you know, obviously about a year ago, so now they're doing either side of it, so they're getting close now to connecting to the bridge, 'cause they got the bridge deck board, so it's, now it's, now it's kind of almost like the worst-case scenario as far as traffic, but once you get this final connection and everything built and then, and they're shooting, it's eight August, middle of August is what they're telling us is completion date, so it's weather pending, that'll all happen, and things can get back to normal here again, so that's, that's definitely our hope here, I guess, so.
So Jeff, Jeff had some more specific questions for me on, on potential detours, and the sign thing. If the, the sign thing that falls underneath the city of Fargo, project manager, so to speak, I'm assuming, then I can visit with them. What I wanted to do is bring Tom down here tonight to see if other, if people had other ideas on potential detours that you guys did as a city, to see if you could do anything, and if not, if it falls under someone else, then I can work here, I don't know. I didn't wanna come down and just answer questions, I wanna try to solve the problem with you, and work together with you to do that, so if we can, the stepping up the enforcement, that, you know, that, I could, that's not an issue, right? I can do that as the sheriff. Some of the other things, we've just gotta make sure that we follow, follow the law, but there are little things that we can do, like the signage and stuff, if we can, if we could see some of that stuff, if people give me ideas, you know, the, where it sit, that was, that was a good one, the increased traffic or the school dimes, things like that, I can, I can help you with that, right? And if, and if someone thinks of the, of a, a new law that maybe they wanna try to initiate or try, and, and we feel like it'll benefit public safety, 'cause that's, that's what I'm concerned with, then I'm always willing to do what I...
There's a main artery that goes through that new building, and that's like nine hundred houses back there, why wouldn't they finish that to Sixty-fourth and take some of that traffic out, about twenty-five houses, why are they putting all that traffic onto a one-story building?
You know, which...
Why wouldn't you finish that out? That's peace, you know, to say you're... And you can have people dump out there if they're not coming to the place. Why wouldn't that be finished prior to putting up nine hundred houses? There's only one inlet, not another, right? Why would you do that? Just tell, sometimes we, projects fall into place, and as much as people plan to try and plan for the stuff... People are paying the price right now, or people in that development who are twenty-five, thirty houses back there, are paying the price for that mistake. Ask our mailboxes.
So, I mean, that, that, obviously, that, I would not answer too, but...
This is part of the city of Forrest, the city of West Fargo, that is fighting over it, but finish it, and then get those people to get out there on six, and then we can be...
You can answer that, yeah.
They don't wanna come through either, like, I don't wanna go through Deer Creek, and I don't wanna... Right? They're gonna take gravel roads and that's...
So...
They don't wanna come through our building either, but they gotta finish their project. They should, they should've done that prior to football, though. Yes, it's, it's difficult sometimes, to make it all get together, it's... But there's only... It's funding for this and a lot, and make it all work, and then every once in a while there's a gap in there, you know, and, and this happens, so. I can see that with twenty-five houses or thirty houses, but you talk to nine hundred of, and there's only an inlet, there's not an outlet, and that's gonna be the traffic issue. Same on whoever decided that. And that, that road along the diversion there, too, it's just not, it's just not a very good road, not a lot of gravel, it's not, if all that traffic was pushed over there, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't feel as tenacious, right? Here's a little while more, you think they have to try that. In this stage, before they got big. Yeah, apart, yeah, so, yeah, so we're gonna try and keep people on the pavement, and, and when no one wants to do it, or go further east, you know, and come back around, I guess, and for, for each of those, just, you know, just, just ask them for people's patience, you know, just to leave a little earlier, that kind of thing, you know, and get where you wanna go, and it just, it's... That all... You guys are, you know, everybody else, they're all doing that, you know, it's, it's just, that's unfortunate, but just how, how it all comes to the head here, I guess. It was out in the north, we're working here south, doing the paving stuff there in those turn lanes, and County Road sixteen is also severed now with the burden, so there's so many things that have happened in this area, it's such a behind the activity down here, so it's just so hard to plan sometimes to make it all work, you know, so.
So what, what is the current signed detour route for Cass seventeen and Fifty-second? You said it was signed? What, what is, what is the currently signed detour?
I mean, you're supposed to take Forty, and the official detour is to go all the way to Y twenty-nine, and come back and go on a hundred.
To go south?
Yeah, to go south, and, I mean, there, I mean, there is that, I mean, it's not official, but there is Forty-Fifth Street and that Seventy-sixth Avenue, and we, like I say, some people have been cutting through Deer Creek, and that's probably not, not the best year but happening, and then also this other route for these people, I guess, but it's, it's more, if you could stay on the section nine roads and go east and back around, it's, it's better than, I mean, otherwise, it's, you take the gravel, you know, west of Forty, and you go another mile west of diversion, and you can go, you know, down to, you go clear down to Seventy-sixth Avenue, County Road six, and that's, so, a lot further around, it's a lot better road than the one rest of the burden is, but it just takes longer to hit that way, I guess, to, whether it's, do you take that, or do you take the pavement and go, you know, sometimes you gotta go north or south, or go west to come back around, I guess. Like I say, we're, we're hopeful at that, and that's the reason we even started, like when we did on Fifty-second Avenue, like a couple days, you know, before the fourth of July, 'cause they need it every day, they can, so they can get that, get that work done. I stopped there today, and they had, like, a, a curb and sidewalk is off, and they're starting the YD part, and the lights are out, so they're, so they're working, you know, and they gotta connect that to bridge, and the road to the east here, too, so there's a lot of moving parts there, I guess, so it's just, you know, all these signs that for the detours are there, I guess, but it's, you know, it's, you know, if people follow.
Okay.
So I guess, from my perspective, real quick here, would just be, so we can kinda keep the meeting going here, from our, from our end of things, from the sheriff's office, we'll keep up our increased patrols there, we'll make sure that we're monitoring the truck traffic, and our truck regulatory person up there, we'll concentrate on some of the times you, you were mostly concerned that schools got back early. Okay. I'll check on that parking complaint on Sixty-fourth that you asked me about, and if that's, that's what we can do, if the, the city decides here a little bit later on, and we need to, or stop sign in that area, monitor that, and I don't know if there's any other talks of any sort of detour, or else you have the rest of the D E plays out here. Bring the radar trailer out there, is there any, any way else that I can help you? I get stuck in the office from time to time, obviously, and my whole, we've got a large agency, we've got two hundred and thirty-five people, but I'll do my best to try and get up to that area myself, and around the traffic, I do that, so I was a little late here tonight, 'cause it, that's just a hard officer on the traffic stop on Fifty-second Avenue, which seems to be a little bit of a racetrack, so I'll have to make sure that we get that person stopped, that's why I waited minutes late. But anyways, what's that?
They lowered the speed limit up.
Yeah, that was a good solution, right? People are, people are speeding and racing down the road, so it's lower for everyone else, the majority of the people aren't speeding and doing it, right? But again, I'm not the engineer, so, I'm just the traffic enforcement person, and will enforce the laws over there, but, yeah, no, it's, it's, there's a lot of speeding complaints. I live in West Fargo, my backyard is an ice street west, and I can tell you that I have some racetrack in my backyard as well, and some traffic I get before myself, and, yeah, so. But we'll do our best to, to help you guys and try to keep it safe in that area, and don't hesitate to call us if you need something, I'm gonna give you every line here, number. If you've been here before, I'll give them people this number, but this is a renewed number now, this is dispatch number, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, the non-emergency number, and that's seven zero one four five one seven six six zero, seven zero one four five one seven six six zero. We're really lucky in this area, 'cause all our agencies get along really well, so we share dispatching, so if you're anywhere in Cass County, Fargo, West Fargo, Hallewood County, Warren and Clay County, that number will be to direct any dispatcher, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so you don't take a run around, you have to look for that number. And don't, don't hesitate to call us, tell people, sometimes we post it, but you don't wanna call me, 'cause we know you guys are busy, it'll bother you. It actually uses more resources if you don't call straight away, if you call straight away, we can get out and address the problem, and then we use less resources, and if you later day or two, you gotta go back and try to figure something out, and that's so much more people to investigate it, and it uses more resources. We'll still do that, but it's just easier if you call straight away, so. Okay, but in the meantime, try to help you out as much as we can, and you have seen more people out there, correct? Is that the case? Okay, so, I, that would be all, there's... So I, that would be all, there it stands.
The next time we get a sheriff's update, can we get traffic updates to them from, from that area?
Yeah, yeah, I, actually, what I did was I, I sent a directive out, we wanted an opportunity to work my directive for about a week, and a few days here, at the next meeting, we can give you a total hours of dispensable there, traffic stops and stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions before he leaves?
I'll, I'll stay around for a little while.
I have a question for the gentleman.
Yeah?
Is our road wide enough to have two-way traffic?
What's your, what's your opinion?
Because I, I'm the very first house, you know, making two development, and we can't have two cars coming head on to turn, like you can't turn that corner with two cars, so.
How you pull those out there?
Definitely your, I mean, probably like a twenty-foot top or something like that on the pavement, you know?
So I mean, isn't the evaluated there for the traffic that we're pushing there? There's going to be laws that govern that, right?
It's just. It's a little high yield, you know, and it's, it's old people don't even pull up.
Hopefully, hopefully.
If, if not, I mean, if there was one benefit, I'll.
I've had my mailbox taken out.
As long as that's right down.
Right.
Ben, three people in, in my ditch in my front yard in the last year, you know, at various hours in the morning. First off, thank you.
Call us right away.
And you for coming over and addressing us in a different way than the police chief or the fire chief did last time. Yous are all very accountable, and we've noticed a difference. But, you know, it just kind of feels like our neighborhood is suffering since the gates been open. I've got a five-year-old daughter that I'm concerned about that is coming up after your kids and playing in the street.
I don't let her, I don't let her bike from four thirty to probably six thirty, just because the traffic's not that, and she gets the ditch for traffic.
And we, we had it explained to us what safety was by the fire chief, and we all looked around and say it's less safe.
Yeah, oh, completely. Yeah, no, we need, we need to evaluate it from all, a whole perspective, right? So if there's, if by what we're doing, they may move exactly as I asked you, but by what we're doing, if it's making it more unsafe, then we're going to have to look at things, you know, we're going to, maybe try to figure a few things out, so.
And, you know, Sheriff Jenner, I, I just want to maybe give a little clarification as well. I think what the residents are concerned about is we're taking collector traffic from West Fargo into an area that was never meant to handle that kind of traffic. It is not meant to handle collector roads, and so I think that their concern is we're taking on massive amounts of, of collector road traffic that's not meant to go in there, and I would like to just acknowledge the gentleman in the back, I understand, you know, and I acknowledge in your concerns with just the fact that the roads are not compatible, and none of us up here were, unfortunately, we weren't here when those, when that community, that development was developed, and I think, looking at it, I think all of us can agree on council that we're, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it now, but looking for the future, on our perimeters, I think it's safe to say, I think we're all in agreement that we need to be working hand in hand with these other communities who are going to be buttoning up next to us to make sure that we don't have this issue again, because this, this is a serious concern of mine as well, and I just want you guys to know that I feel for you, and I am very concerned about the traffic as well because your road is not meant to handle collector traffic, so.
Thank you.
I am very thankful that you guys are stepping up and patrolling, but I think, just to clarify what they're trying to say is because the road is like a one and a half lane road, it's not meant for two-lane traffic that's going thirty-five miles an hour, it's just not meant to handle that.
We have no sidewalks, we have no streetlights, so it's, it's just not.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, yes.
Have they finished that main artery? You're going to say without problems. Why would you put in that main artery to exit nine hundred people? Because we on we.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good situation.
Well, in our, in the difficulty there was city limit splitting up against each other.
Fight and get it over with and put it in, but it needs to go in. Yes, it's, they're going up to a tree road, and that's it. With, with that thing going to sixty-four, whether you guys gravel it, and those people who shoot up that, like, they don't want to come to ourselves either, they, they really don't. But they have no way out, and shame on West Fargo and Horace for, for that. It should have been planned.
I agree, it should have been planned.
Without that.
Yep.
And we do appreciate, we, we feel the support from the council.
We do.
And the city, which is how, we just have to find a solution.
And, and the sheriff?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, our, our job, right, is to work with you to, to solve problems, public safety problems, it doesn't matter if it's assaults, burglaries, thefts, traffic issues, right? So, yeah, I mean, it's, it, we try to do our best to, to do what we can, and, and no one in here should ever feel bad about calling our office, calling me directly, like, you mess up, we'll never, you know, people call me all the time, I won't, I'm not a person that pushes off calls when people call them and talk to them directly to someone else. I know that happens in some different entities, I'm not a like the person, you guys, that me as the sheriff. I work correctly for you, I don't work for anyone else, there's not a city council that appoints me, we work with Forrest, but that's the sheriff, you, I'm like, I, I would think that you'd probably expect to talk to me personally if you called, and that's why. So, but we'll be all there and we'll try to work with you and do what we can, and feel like, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, anything else before we move on to the next item, which is the stop sign in your neighborhood?
So if, is there a possibility that, once there's an outlet, the existing piece of road gets taken out for good? I mean, we've heard rumblings around the neighborhood that that might be a possibility. Is it, or is that just us wishful thinking?
Um, well, I will, I'll address our county engineer. To your knowledge, is there an agreement between West Fargo and Horace to maintain that road, to keep that road in existence?
Sorry, okay.
The road that the gate is on?
Yes.
Is it required to stay? Is, is there an agreement between West Fargo and Horace currently that it requires that road to stay there? I realize.
There isn't a.
Understood, and that, that's a good answer, because I'm not aware of one unless somebody else is. And, yes, obviously, we know we need to have a way in and a way out, two, two entrances, two exits.
Well, I have to maybe just say one thing, though, Jeff, that's twenty-two, twenty-one fire code only pertains to developments that have thirty more homes, thirty or more homes. I believe Greyhawk is under the thirty.
And I'm going to have to check, yep.
Threshold.
Okay, but that is, that is one other idea that has been brought up, just so that you are aware, and I'll leave that up for you guys to, future discussion with our city engineer as well. But obviously, for the time being right now, by the time anything would get planned, obviously your fifty-seventh, fifty-second roundabout project would be done, and hopefully traffic does calm down once that's done. I, I do think this was a timing issue, but for right now, was there any other questions before I go on to the next item, which is a stop sign, putting up a stop sign in the neighborhood?
Back, you have a back wall out there, we can pick that part up, find out.
I think we can.
I didn't hear that.
Fair enough.
A bunch of vehicle crashes all there.
We'll move on to item number eight, if that's okay. We're going to talk about possibly putting a stop sign out there at an intersection of Seventy-third Street and Sixty-first Avenue South. For us to put up stops, and we have to make them in an area where it actually makes sense. I, I do know some residents probably have a hard time getting out at certain hours of the day, which is why we would propose them at specific intersections. I'm open to ideas, if, if that's not a good idea of that intersection, I think there's only one other one that would make sense, so I will have the audience give me input if, if that's something different.
I don't want a stop sign part as much as if we had some T-posts on our corners, because all the traffic comes off to the side on every corner, that it takes the gravel down, and eventually that blocktop's going to be pushed out, everything else, because if it's a truck, not semi or anything, the wheels, our corners are so tight, the wheels are always down in the ditch, even if it's outside might help, but if there's T-posts there, I don't know what our distance would have to be up to the road, or it's got to be a foot away, that traffic doesn't get down, or big rocks, or whatever, that, you know, it, they gotta get around that then, because our roads on all the corners, we're probably down sixty-eight inches now from the blocktop down into gravel, or eventually that road is going to get pushed out, or we should fill that back up, you know? It takes it for a better turn, of course, but if there's posts there or something, you're probably not going to want to get a T-post, those little reflector ones, a bicycle can get those, and it's not a problem, but, you know, detours them, they, they're going to have to think a little more on their corners.
If, is that something that a, a snowplow's going to have a problem navigating though?
Yeah. Snowplow, you guys in the winter, you put up those fiberglass ones?
Yep.
But in winter, if you pull them out, I guess we pull them out, or if it bothers them, but because they take those corners so tight, and they're always down in ditch park, so it's deep, and I, my feeling is actually, when you got six inches, there's a little blocktop going with no support against it, you know, we're going to start running into problems with weight there, whatever line there, you know, that's where it's going to break up.
Okay.
But if the posts were there, they're probably going to watch a little tighter, take wider, whatever they got to do with it.
Brent, can you pull up an aerial so I can see?
Yeah.
Can you remind me to, do, do we have signage not allowing truck traffic within on the roadway, or where is the?
Is it load restrictions or is it truck traffic?
I couldn't remember where we.
You got no trucks coming in from, from Horace side.
Okay.
West Fargo side, there's no.
There's no signage over there?
Not many.
Okay.
So it's not properly signed?
Well, I think at minimum, Neil, there's those two T-intersections there, there needs to be at minimum some yield signs there, there never has been, which hasn't been an issue, it's just been the neighborhood traffic, but now, like, we go out for walks and people constantly, like Jason said, cut in the corners and in the ditch and cut them wide and running into each other practically.
That's where I was asking, stop sign, to actually make them stop.
But even at seventy-fourth too, because that's where traffic really gets going, is that long straightaway, and they start going fast, and that's where the majority of the kids in the neighborhood live right now.
Okay.
Where's our guys, have they been sit up around?
They've been.
Pretty close to where they gave them, not down.
Yeah, they have, they have, they have.
So we should rotate around them maybe a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Speed bumps have been explored.
We had speed bumps there last summer.
Where were they?
They just went down the ditch, they went around.
And then, yeah, we had.
Yeah, they go around the ditch, then you have people.
Oh, my gosh.
They were in my yard.
So, so a concern I'd have for a council is if you have T-posts, I understand the idea there behind it, but if you have T-posts there to restrict that traffic, can you accomplish basically the same thing with a stop sign? Stop sign is probably a little less liability on the city, where if you have a T-post right at the curve or right off the edge, we have had residents before put T-posts or metal posts, rebar at the edge of the street before, and we've had to have them remove it because their intention was to basically, vehicle that just gets off the road even a little bit, their intention was to dr- damage it, so we had, we had to make them remove it, so.
Can you?
I am concerned with T-posts, but the stop sign, it does make them stop, well, they're supposed to stop, and hopefully think their turn movement a little bit better, but just expressing a concern there. And yes, we've had speed bumps there, the residents are right, we had people cutting through ditches then to avoid the speed bumps, and.
The corners are tight enough where people have to slow down into straightaway, the way they're going.
Yeah.
So you have a stop sign, that straightaway is where they get going. They stop, like, if they, they turn that corner and they rock and roll, right? All the way until you get down to my house, and there's another corner, and then they start slowing down a little bit, just because.
I had a guy that just looked up, and he seen me on my mower last week, coming out of the ditch, so.
Could you hover your.
He was looking at his phone or what, but.
Where the proposed stop sign would be?
Yeah.
They're both on the agenda.
They're on the corner too, they do, they will hit them around ours anyway, that would next full back.
So, so a stop sign, and I look at Eric of giving me any feedback there, or council, the stop sign would be intended to stop traffic going southbound on Seventy-third Street South, so where Jase put the circle there. You typically wouldn't stop the traffic on Sixty-first, is that correct?
Correct.
You typically stop the lesser of their, you know, the main road is Sixty-first there, not Seventy-third.
Usually a stop sign would go on the minor road.
In a normal situation for traffic, Sixty-first would be your heavier travel road than Six, than Seventy-third.
I mean, I'd, I'd be okay with a stop sign there.
Legislative thing, I think, that we're going to try to work on this year is raising the fines for speeding and things like that. I think most of you guys know that our fines are really, they're not a deterrent. Ten, ten to my dollar for speeds and stuff, doesn't do much. In fact, I'll give you an idea of people's mindset, when I'm going to work in the morning and I stop some people, I'll stop them, and I'll point out what they did, and they'll tell me, and I don't care what else, I've heard some people told me. We have some of the motorcycles issues that we've got, people driving past those, and probably get a lot of motorcycles through there, I just wanted to tell you some mindset here. We have that incident a little while, the Hoxton report, deputy stopped three motorcycles because people wouldn't do the least, and one guy fled, he went down to the end of the road, the dead end, and he turned around, he came back, our deputy, the deputy of ours down here, Deputy Keller, and Deputy Keller pointed him over to the side of the road, and the guy went around him and made him, came up to the stoplight, there's traffic there, so the guy had to stop, so Deputy Keller ran up and grabbed the guy's arm and light turned him, he took off on his motorcycle, and got them, crashed his motorcycle, and the guy saw it, it was in the news about three weeks ago. For some reason, the guy thought it was me, which is, that's whatever it is, he's like, I can't believe you're out there as the sheriff trying to kick people off their bikes. What are you talking about?
You're everywhere.
So, and this is, this is on my official Jesse Jenner Cass County Sheriff page. So I said, well, it wasn't me, but are you referring to the person that tried to flee from our deputy when they pulled him stop? And the guy said, yeah, I don't care what we're doing, I don't think it's right for you guys to try to pull people off motorcycles. I said, well, people, we don't have traffic laws, they can't flee from us. And then the guy simply said, I don't care what your laws are, we're going to continue doing what we want to do, and he sent me a picture of someone died in my Facebook page. So I can't identify the person, the license plate, but it's just, there's not a lot of, where I was going with it, or my whole point of that, telling you guys out, is that, there's not a lot of deterring, right now, people are really afraid to be pulled over by law enforcement, a lot of them are just fleeing, they tried to move, fleeing, got asked, and I just love them, I got, got shot down, but, so I think that, that's something we can work on as well. That's not to sidetrack the conversation, but I just wanted to let you know that, I think that's.
Ray said about the traffic on that.
I don't want to interrupt, yeah, but all kind of point out.
Yeah, please do.
This curve here.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Coming down around the curve, right here is where we're talking about that stop sign, or this one here coming down, the, coming down this way. I think residents all know, which we're a little, but a little more perspective of how it is, and that's why, I have right here, and they kept this corner so tight, and to my point, it's bent in there, it's, I get it, T-posts by the side of the road, it is a hazard. Kids on a bike by the front road, it's worse, you know, I get it, both ways, we don't want that, but we don't want, you know, we want maybe to.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the liability for the city, so.
Right.
But just asking Eric about this, could it be possible one there, possibly, because you're going from Seventy-fourth Street to Sixty-first Avenue, so you are going a different street connection, and that's one of the initial things we look at, you know, from the non-engineer side, that's something I would look at, is okay, are you, having two different streets connect? If it's the same street, that's typically more of an issue, where, so where the red dots are could be possible.
I don't know, if we ask the residents, you really got to slow down to make this curve, because it's not very wide, if you guys think it's feasible or not, if there was a stop sign there, you thought it would help.
But if you're looking of.[1795.53] But if you're looking of.
I don't know if that.
To help with the traffic, those are the locations that could be feasible. Yeah.
And coming in down on the, and down here, we do have the signs, twenty-five children that way, no trucks. You know, which some trucks come through of course, because they don't know where they're going. They're trying to get over there, but I don't think intentionally it's somewhere because if you can tell they're stopping or on their phone, they're figuring, well, I'm trying to get over here, I don't know where they're going.
Why can't we have a no truck sign up at the top then?
Down here coming in.
Um, up by the gate. Up at the gate. Yeah, I mean, if we're not, if we have a no trucks going into Greyhawk from Horace, why don't we have one up?
Coming back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just the stop signs on the West Fargo side and then the gate. And that's all, then there's no sign coming in, but probably wouldn't hurt to have a little truck tank coming in from West Fargo side.
That would have to be coordinated with the city of West Fargo.
Could one be in the city limits of Horace, yes, but not, West Fargo, West Fargo would have to have, they would have to law us to have one there.
But, but we already have one.
Yeah.
On our side anyways, so.
But if it's in the West Fargo city limits, West Fargo would have to.
But we could put it on our jurisdiction and then they could back up and turn around.
So you, you could, but.
They might have it when we back in here, no trucks get to their venue, I just, I, and they'll notice nothing. Beaver in or a car.
I would imagine if you had a no truck sign in the city of Horace limits, by the time they saw it, to ask them to back up is probably.
They wouldn't be.
A big ask?
Yeah. There's nowhere really to turn around.
Semi, back out of there. It's a twenty minute process.
Right, it'd be a lot easier to coordinate with the city of West Fargo, I think, on that.
Yeah, okay, well, I have no problem coordinating with West Fargo to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Is the natural outlet going to be where that road is there on the left side of the screen going all the way to sixty-fourth? Over here?
You mean the ninth street?
Yeah.
It's the collector road from West Fargo.
So will that eventually be coming through at some point?
Yeah, it's already platted, so it's, once the council approves the plat and does the project, it'll get done as part of Oldenburg Acre second edition, I believe. And so that's just a matter of when that happens, developers already presented to the city. And as far as, you know, everyone's questions of why did the city do this, why hasn't this been planned yet? That road has been talked about for years, eighty-first has been talked about for years. Both are in the works, they're just not done yet. And realize too, those are big roads and that comes with a big price tag. So it's the city trying to keep track of the cost to the residents because someone has to pay for it. The city doesn't just have a pool of money to throw at this stuff. So these conversations that everyone has presented tonight, the city has discussed and has discussed it for years. It's just a matter of figuring out how to make it work for everyone.
And that would be.
And it takes time.
And typically that's an assessment district.
Has the developer put a plat all done now?
The, the plat has been drafted, it hasn't been approved yet.
Yeah.
It's been on hold.
I think we gave them four at the very first plat, we wanted thirty-eight, thirty-foot fronts and we didn't say what we want that building.
It's not been denied.
No.
No, it got tabled back in twenty-twenty-one, I think, and it just, the developer hasn't brought it forward, but the right of way was platted. Before that plat came forward.
Right away, yes, yeah, but not the developer.
Yeah, so with special assessments, I mean, since this is something that would benefit the wilds greatly, like what are the laws? We're making sure that West Fargo.
City can't levy assessments on other cities, just like they don't levy an assessment on any Horace residents if you try to get into the city of West Fargo. Or the city of Fargo. No, that's right, it's just, it's just a tough situation and it's, as Horace has now grown on the west side of the river, the growing pains are, are that exactly. Just know that it is in the works, it's just something that takes time and there's a big price tag to it. And so the city's also been working on trying to get grant dollars and state funds for that. The city's population just exceeded five thousand, uh, per the state this year. And so with that, the city has additional funds to put towards these projects. Uh, so that's something that if the council so desired, they could for a larger project like Ninth and then of course eighty-first further to the west. So it's in the works, it's just, it's not there yet and obviously it's frustrating because County Road Seventeen is closed right now, but.
Okay, so getting back to stop signs. Do you all feel it will actually benefit or not? And just be honest.
I don't think so on the corners. I'm pretty tired, but this is.
And I'm okay with that.
More stop signs.
Absolutely. Do you need the signs in the center of seventy-fourth two, additional ones to remind people to slow down? That would be kind of awesome.
Like a slow children.
Yeah, slow children reminder, like if people must, like if anyone's driven through Deer Creek, they've got big flag.
Yeah, yeah.
Mind it like that would be excessive, but it's okay.
Those who think that the, that a stop sign may help, which spot?
Both.
Both?
I think we should do.
Yeah. And I have no problem doing signage along that long strip there.
Right.
Um, is, how many speed limit signs are there on that?
One way down at the south end coming into the neighborhood, there's nothing when you get around that corner. So people have forgotten by then if they even saw it. And there's one at the north going south.
Right about here.
Yeah, there's one in like between our yard and Gordon's yard too, going southbound. There's a speed limit sign.
Okay.
Can we add an additional speed limit?
A stop sign here coming in through the north, coming out of West Fargo without a stop sign here. Is that the neighborhood? Are you happy with it?
Try it.
I mean, I don't know.
So Eric, is this going to be an hallway stop or just a stop from one direction going a specific direction?
You really want to go in for one here too?
I don't know if in a hallway it's necessary if they're stopping in order from each other.
And have to slam on their brakes in front of that last house and back up.
Over here.
Yeah, over there. Could have missed the turn.
They come like that, they shoot through there and then they're like, oh, that's the dead end.
I've talked about that happen multiple times.
Okay.
Because they don't, they don't.
Cause they don't know the neighborhood, right?
Do we have a dead end there? Do we have a sign that actually says dead end?
There's not any.
You might want to consider putting dead.
There's nothing to the cul-de-sac either. So people go in there and they get lost and have to turn around and come out.
They go by, they're trying to find this way to get out of here, but they get in here and then they're injured and then they're mad, then they're driving fast. So then they come all the way back out and think, I live right here, I watch them. There's your turn, but they don't know that, so they come all the way back out and they're in a hurry. Then because I don't know where.
You mean you don't put your vest on and direct the tra, direct the traffic?
I was thinking, I was getting the sign made, that if you're in a hurry, take a different route.
So right outside of those red circles, would it be helpful to have something like no through street, dead end? So that people could see them in time to turn?
Yes.
Do you think that we have something here, here to direct them to where they're really trying to go and to have them walk?
Well, I think just the no outlet signs, so they know they can't go that way.
Right, from here, but there's a lot of them, they are, do you think we should help them and tell them all the good things?
No, they can figure it out themselves.
All right, I think we've got enough information on that.
Okay.
Is there anything I need to keep in mind for this? Can we have both stop signs there, Eric and Brent?
Yeah, I think it's engineering judgment, it's a little speed road.
Okay.
And, and the big thing too is just if you guys want stop signs, it's just, there have been a lot of ideas thrown up tonight. We were just asked that you put in a motion so I have, I can find exactly where you want them.
Okay.
So that way it's clear.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah. Um, I will make a motion to do a stop sign at each of those intersections and I'm very sorry, you're going to have to tell me what those intersections are.
Be Seventy-third Street South and Sixty-first Avenue South.
Okay.
And that would be northbound.
Yep.
And then Seventy-third Street South and Sixty-first Street South or Avenue South, and that'd be southbound.
Seventy-fourth.
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be Seventy-third Street and Sixty, and Sixty-first Avenue.
Yep.
So this one?
That'd be southbound.
Southbound, please, and then the other one I want northbound.
The other one would be Seventy-fourth and Sixty-first, northbound.
Yep. Um, in addition to a, um, another speed limit sign, please posted on that long stretch of seventy. What is that, seventy-fourth? Um, down, if you want to move your cursor down, I think it should be somewhere, no, down, down, down. Somewhere maybe a little higher, in between there. And I also would like to add, do you guys think we should do a no through on that dead end?
Both of them, on the sides of those red dots. So that they wouldn't go up to the cul-de-sac or to the dead end.
So dead end signs.
Dead end signs. Or no through streets there.
And the other thing we've been looking at, that Public Works has been looking at gaining type-three barricades on that one they were just talking about, uh, Sixty-first Street going east, yeah, where the way it is.
Okay.
Would you like us to account for that?
Probably will get type-three here as well, because that becomes a problem.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Brent, I'll let you reword that entire motion a lot.
Sorry. Come on, Brent, you got this.
Let me finish my notes here real quick. Okay, it's to install stop signs at the intersection of Seventy-third, Seventy-fourth Street South and Sixty-first Street, or Sixty-first Avenue South, northbound.
Mm-hmm.
Stop sign at Seventy-third Street South and Sixty-first Avenue South, southbound.
Yes.
To install speed limit sign on Seventy-fourth Street, northbound.
Yes.
Approximately a third of the way up. So it'd be the, if you're looking in.
Yeah, yes.
From that curve, a third of the way up. Dead end signs where necessary.
Yes.
And then type-three barricade at Sixty-first Avenue going west towards the wilds. And then type-three barricade to south of where the gate used to be.
Agreed.
Where the gate was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's my motion.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Uh, no, I will second that motion.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Oh. Forward or against it, Sarah, sorry, didn't give you enough time. I think she said aye, so. Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnner and, uh, Stacey for showing up tonight. And moving on to number nine, uh, we have a proclamation for Navy Week, I gotta pull that up. One second here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would you like to read it, Jeff, or would you like me to?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Just gotta pull off, pull something on the way, a second.
All right, so a couple of weeks ago, we received an email, um, from an individual asking for the city of Horace to also recognize, uh, Navy Week. Uh, coming up, we will have a retired admiral from the Navy, um, coming to Fargo during the day of July twenty-third through twenty-eighth. And they would like us to also read the proclamation, have some discussion and action on it. Um, so I'll go ahead and do so now. Sure Stephanie has read through this, so I'll go ahead and just, uh, start. So, uh, let me read the whole thing, Brent. Fair enough. Uh, proclamation for Navy Week. Whereas the United States of America has the world's finest navy, which protects America at sea, defends freedom and preserves economic prosperity and helps whenever needed. And wherever, or whereas, the US Navy will be at the Fargo area, July twenty-third through twenty-eighth, in conjunction with the Fargo Air Show. And whereas Navy Week will give Fargo area residents an opportunity to meet some of the Navy's sailors and learn about the Navy's critical missions and its capabilities in executing the maritime strategy. And whereas Navy Week features engagements with corporate, government, education and community service organizations. And whereas the cities of Fargo, West Fargo, Horace, Moorhead and Dilworth are honored by the presence of the US Navy. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Dr. Tim J. Mahoney, Mayor of Fargo, Bernie Darnes, Mayor of West Fargo, Jeff Trudill, Mayor of Horace, Shelby Carlson, Mayor of Moorhead and Chad Olson, Mayor of Dilworth, do hereby pro, uh, proclaim July twenty-third through twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four as Navy Week in the cities of Fargo, West Fargo, Horace, North Dakota and Moorhead and Dilworth, Minnesota. I believe we will be looking for a motion.
Yep.
To accept this.
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation of Navy Week.
Okay, do I got a second?
I'll second.
All right, I'll go with Sarah. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Moving on to number ten, Clemenson addition. Uh, Jase, that's one, go ahead and lead away.
Perfect, all right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, this is an application for subdivision. Uh, the intent of this application is correctional in nature. Uh, the applicant's proposing to subdivide two properties in question into three total lots. Um, and with this proposed plat, the applicant's proposing to correct a property line that currently runs through the rear of an existing residence and complete the separation of the cemetery on the parcel, uh, from the agricultural field, which was a process that was started back in two thousand and four. Uh, the remainder of the property, which I identified on the plat as lot two, block two, will remain an eighty-three point nine-six acre agricultural field. Um, and I'll pull up a map here so we can see what property we're talking about, or series of properties. Turn off that. So the properties here are this residential property and this larger agricultural field with the, the cemetery here as well. Uh, due to the corrective nature of the plat, the Horace Park District is not recommending public land dedication. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission held the public hearing on June twenty-fifth to review the application, receive public testimony and following public, uh, input and commission discussion, the commission voted five-o to recommend approval of the Clemenson addition to city council uh, with the condition, uh, that a rezon will be required for any improvements to the single-family lot, uh, which is lot one, block one, which is the existing house, uh, here, because due to its size, it would not be a conforming parcel at this point, which it's not a conforming parcel now. Uh, I would note that following the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff was approached by the owners of eight thousand six hundredth Avenue South, which is this large parcel right here, uh, with some concerns over an easement that is listed on the plat. And I'll pull up that here shortly. So on the plat here, there is a, a minor access easement that runs through here that the, the property owners are dedicating to an existing driveway that's used to access the, the eight thousand six, uh, hundredth Avenue property. And I think there's some confusion in terms of, of what that easement is doing because the, the driveway for those properties runs across, uh, the, the proposed plat's property. And they're trying to secure and make sure that that access is good for future owners or anything like that. I don't know if the applicants have had a chance to talk with those property owners to clear the air of what that easement is supposed to do. Um, and I don't believe they're here tonight. I know the property owners are here tonight, but the.
I am.
The Ness's, the, the neighbor properties.
I'm Marie, I'm Marie Smith.
But I don't believe that the neighbor who had the concern is in attendance tonight, um, for that.
Hello?
Yes, I agree.
I'm Marie Smith, I don't know what you.
Right, I'm, I'm talking about the, the Ness, the owners of the property adjacent to you that had the concern about the easement.
Uh, this, the little driveway there?
Yeah, there was, there was concern at the Planning and Zoning Commission about that access easement there and they were. and they were advised by their land use, or their attorney, to not provide the easement, but they're not the ones providing the easement. The, the plat is providing the easement to allow their driveway to continue. And I'll show the aerial image, it's probably a little more helpful to show how the driveway once that shows up. So this part is part of the, the Marie Smith property, and as you can see, this driveway runs through their backside property. So that access easement on that plat is being given by the Smith property to allow for the continuance of the, of this, this driveway. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And so when I tried to explain that to the, the property owners, that it would be for their benefit to keep or have that easement remain on the plat, because right now it might be a handshake deal for that driveway to exist there, but any new owners, it could become a, a potential civil matter. So a couple of options that we could do is, is force the conversation between the two properties and table this until that is done. But staff is comfortable in its current fashion of proceeding with their approval of this, because it is a long-term protection for that existing driveway. If they want to one day remove that driveway off that property, it's just an easement that exists there, the easement can be vacated. Uh, but right now it does clear up a potential civil issue later.
I have, I have tried to, uh, work with them and tried to get a time when we can get together and sign that easement, which is very, very simple. You know, it just says that we will share the driveway, period.
Right.
And it says I cannot drive on their property, I guess, that's the way they want it. That driveway has been used by anybody who has lived in those two houses since nineteen sixty. And before that, it was used as a common driveway for the, for the Ness's house. So it's been, which was my house at one time.
Right.
So that driveway has been used forever for whoever wanted to use it. And I don't know what their problem is, I don't know why they should be upset about this, because it gives, this easement that I'm talking about, that I have, that gives them the property, the right to drive on the driveway and all the way into their land. What it does for me, it stops me right at that big second first, that second oak tree.
Correct.
Which means that I can't drive any further onto their property. And I've never, I've never driven onto their property when I was living there.
Right.
So I don't know what their problem is. I would still like to have them sign this easement, so that at least it would be on paper and it would be completed.
So the easement you're referring to is separate from the plat dedication? The easement that's being dedicated on the plat?
That I can't tell you, because I don't know what this is.
Sure.
So, I'm Alex, the old more engineering, and the one coordinating the plat work for Ms. Smith. The easement shown on there was purely done because of the existing driveway. You know, we saw it was a natural path between the two, so we put it on there. I guess I'm not aware of a separate easement document.
Yeah, so, so besides the second easement document, which. Sorry, look, do we want to open the public hearing before we get too much further?
Sure. Go ahead and open the public hearing, what y'all talked about.
Is Horace going to have an easement, is that what we're talking about?
No, this is just an easement to the public on the plat.
Yeah, and because you're the property owner, you're entitled to put the easement on the plat, which is your property, so you can do that. So I mean, that, that's just fine. And I think Jace's comments here are just relaying the comments that were discussed at the planning commission. It doesn't really involve the city accepting this plat. If they want to, if the two private NCDs, individuals want to execute an easement to, to go the full length of the driveway, they certainly can, but as far as the plat goes, she is fine with, with dedicating that on there now. They don't need to sign off or approve the plat, because they don't have any property contained within the plat boundaries. If that clears it up or muddies it, that's kind of the short of it.
So Marie, your objective is just to have the city put that on there so that it's done and okay, it's all?
That would be very nice.
So the. It was more of a courtesy move than anything.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
There, there is a sliver of property that Ness's own on the south side of that driveway, where the easement would be.
But I don't think that's contained within the plat boundary. And that, that's my point, is, is for, for the council, their concern is within the, the folded line, which is all owned by Ms. Smith.
Okay, so, from what you just said, for tonight's purposes, we can go ahead and possibly approve this, and we'll have no actual impact on a different.
Arguably, there's a prescriptive easement already in place, they've been using this rule for twenty-five years.
Correct.
But I don't want to murky the waters, so as far as, as far as what we're doing tonight, it's the plat, and just the plat, there's no rezon either. So it's just approving the plat. And, and like the gentleman said, this is a courtesy to include that triangle on there, just to show that they acknowledge that this individual, the other individual to the west, has been using the property as the driveway, so we're going to include that access easement on there, so they can continue using the property as such.
Fair enough. Okay. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I, I think it's a matter of cleaning up old Horace. The, you know, the centuries of, uh, property lines in Horace.
The addition of these minutes, there's right-of-way now for eighty-first, it's been used as a road, additional right-of-way for a hundredth, that's getting added on to that. On the map, you can see that there is a property line that runs through the rear of this house, so they're pulling that property line down, essentially trying to clean it up to where at some point it could be a viable parcel for someone to continue operating in use. It would just at some point need a rezon. And in discussions with, with the applicant, the representatives, there wasn't really kind of a plan in place at that point, so there wasn't a direction of what kind of zoning district to go with. But there are light residential, uh, suburban residential districts directly adjacent that could be latched on to later in the future. But there is no, no development associated with this plat.
We're not talking about any rezons tonight.
No.
Okay.
Just plat. Any other further discussion from the public?
So how do I file that?
What?
Or do I have to file anything?
The city will, will take care of it, the city will, if the council approves it tonight, will, uh, obtain signatures from everyone that needs to sign the plat. The, the mayor signs it, the city auditor, um, the planning commission, you will sign it, um, I sign it. Alex will sign it as the surveyor. And then my office will record it with the county.
Okay.
And it'll be done. And this is just the, the plat itself?
That's just the plat, so if you have the other documents, we can discuss those.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, and go ahead and close the public hearing? All right, and a discussion from the council? Or do you guys want to make a motion?
Do you guys have concerns?
No, I don't have concerns. I don't think that I do, I mean, I think we had good discussion here tonight, so I don't have any concerns.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I can do the motion, I just want to make sure I get the wording right. Is it just a motion to, um, approve the subdivision application?
Just to approve the plat as presented? And then I would add the, the condition that the Planning and Zoning Commission added with that as well, which is prior to any improvements on Lot One, Block One, the applicant or owner or future signee must rezon the property to create a conforming lot.
Okay.
And that.
So moved.
Fair enough, I'll let, will you two write that down?
Can, can somebody say that so we can hear it? Yeah.
Yep.
Does that plat include the easement?
It includes a, the easement on the property, but if there's a plan to have an overall easement for that whole driveway, that does not include that.
That wasn't ever the intention. We can't hear anything, you guys are saying it.
We, we tried to have speakers put in, they, uh, they denied that, the fire district denied that, so. We're trying, you can promise. Okay, I need somebody to read off the motion then, so that everybody in the audience can hear it.
Okay, so this is a motion to approve the subdivision application for the Clemenson addition, subject to the following conditions of approval, which are prior to any improvements on Lot One, Block One, which is the house lot here. The applicant, owner, or future signee must rezon the property to create a conforming lot. Did you hear that?
Okay, is that going to be rezoned then as residential?
An application will need to be brought forward to do that.
There's a different process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right, moving on to number eleven. Have water, sewer, storm, and street improvement districts, number twenty-two-three-dash-one, South Hill Farm Sixth. And, uh, we got Eric tonight instead of Jim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Let the record reflect that I am not Jim. Jim was gonna call in, but, uh, wasn't sure he was gonna sell service on his way back from Chicago, so.
Okay.
I'm the lucky man that gets to step in. So what this is, is, uh, for the project you referenced on the item there, um, it's a construction engineering services agreement for South Hill Farm Sixth Edition. These fees will be specially assessed as part of the improvement district for that whole block area. It's a standard agreement that we've done for, um, all of our developments where there's going to be a design engineer, and then we oversee the construction.
Yep.
Engineering, so. The tasks are outlined, some of the main ones, conducting pre-construction conferences, design engineer, according to all testing, running all the estimates, all that stuff. Record plans, getting that to the city, and any closeout work. Like I said, that's pretty standard, but, um, it does have a, an amount not to exceed, and it's typically the eight percent as a percentage of the estimate. And then there's some other tasks that may come up, uh, for design and planning phase services, and for additional special engineering services or not. So, pretty boilerplate.
Okay, what was the not to exceed price?
Not to exceed for construction phase services is a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then the estimate, um, and our schedule of rates is well, the schedule rates is attached, and all of the estimates attached with this project, just to give you a little bit about current prices level of this, but, uh, Dirt Dynamics is the contractor. I think they're looking to, um, set up a recon potentially next week, uh, but that was bid, I think, in mid-June, so. And Alarre Engineering is the design engineer.
Okay. Questions?
What's the total project cost?
Good question.
Roughly?
Roughly, well. Whatever, take a hundred and sixty-three, eight percent of that total is a hundred and sixty-four, a hundred and sixty-three, so. Two point mil, two million?
Yeah.
Round numbers. And that's, this is for South Hill Sixth, which is just north of Adamant's Edition. Along Sixty-sixth Street, on the east side there.
Questions?
I have no questions.
Questions? Sarah, you got any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the water, sewer, storm, and street improvement district number two thousand twenty-three-one. Oh, the construction engineering service agreement.
Okay, we got a motion on the table, do we got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Item number twelve.
All right.
Looks like you're back up, Eric.
So this item is the, um, it's for water, sewer, storm, and street improvement district number twenty-two-four-dash-three, Deer Creek's sec, Estates Second and Third Edition. We held a bid opening on last Thursday, July eleventh. We received bids from six different contractors. Dakota Underground, JR Purkey, Master Construction, Northern Improvement Company, Park Construction Company, and Saline Brothers. And we had, um, Master Construction was the apparent low bidder, which was just slightly lower than the engineer's estimate. The bulk of them were slightly higher than the estimate, but, um, not a crazy spread between the, the bids. The contractor has been asked to, uh, provide the documents that, for the, uh, responsible bidder policy.
Okay.
So I guess, um, any action would be contingent on review of that responsible bidder policy documentation. Master Construction has performed, uh, work within Horace before. I think they did the Arrowwood, whichever addition that will be. Just on the, on the west side of, kind of seventeen, the north one.
Arrowwood Third.
It's, yeah.
Okay. All right, any questions on this one?
No.
Separate or individual?
Lucas?
Si, uh, do them separate, I'll, I'll talk about mine next.
Okay. So we're gonna look for a motion for the, um, review of the bid and awarding the, the project to Master Construction.
I will make the motion to, um, award the project to Master Construction, contingent upon the responsible bidder policy for water, sewer, storm, street improvement district number twenty-two-four-dash-three, please.
Okay, we got a second.
I'll second.
I can second that.
All right, I'll give it to Sarah. Okay, we got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Part B, the ID agreement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, standard, uh, ID agreement that the city enters into, uh, with the developers. Uh, the city received, um, the petition for improvements on this one, March first, twenty-twenty-four. The city created the district on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the ID agreement covers Deer Creek Estates Second and Third, uh, additions. The engineer's estimate for this originally was three million, five hundred thirty-five thousand. Seems like that number, uh, may have changed along the way, so I might need to revise it, but again, that's just the estimate. The developers required to put up a, um, letter of credit in the amount of sixty-five percent of the engineer's opinion of probable construction costs, uh, for this project. Uh, their standard, uh, default language that's included in this agreement. Land dedication. The developer previously contributed fifty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents as payment in lieu of land dedication for Deer Creek Estates Addition, and two hundred and six thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars and forty cents as payment in lieu of land dedication for Deer Creek Estates Second Edition to satisfy the land dedication requirements, uh, for those developments, and Deer Creek Estates Third Edition. So the previous payment in lieu covers Deer Creek Second and Third, so they're, they're good to go on that. Casserole will provide water service to this, uh, to these developments. Uh, the agreement calls for a developers' agreement with Casserole, before the city will proceed with the project. Under those agreements, if the city and Casserole, the city will, uh, do the infrastructure as part of its project, and then they give the cost to Casserole, and then Casserole creates its own, uh, assessment district for the water improvements. So they'll do that, uh, for this development or these developments as well. And then that sewer. I forgot what blank, you know, sewer is on this one?
Number, is it number sixteen?
Yeah, my computer is on a blank, so I'm.
No. Yeah. I think it's item sixteen.
Yeah, so wastewater for the development will be collected and routed to Deer Creek, uh, Edition, which is in Fargo. Uh, storm sewer will go to the various, um, storm sewer, uh, connections that then connect to, uh, Deer Creek in Fargo as well, and side note on that one, the city has a separate MOU with the City of Fargo for storm water, uh, for this, uh, for these developments. Uh, actually, all three of them for Deer Creek Estates. Actually, all three of them for Deer Creek Estates and then 2nd and 3rd Editions. That has not been presented to this council yet. I sent red lines to the City of Fargo, so they are reviewing those red lines to the MOU. And so that agreement will be presented to you guys hopefully at your August meeting. And again, that's just for storm water, just to say that City of Fargo will collect City of Horace's storm water, run it through their system. It's just more convenient to do it that way. And then everything else is just the boilerplate legally that we have.
Is this contingent upon that then, or not?
No.
Okay.
What is MOU?
Memorandum of Understanding. It's essentially agreement between the two cities, but some people like to call them MOUs instead of agreements. They're agreements, but memorandum of understanding is is less daunting, I guess, than an agreement or a contract.
Yeah.
I just have one general question. Under 18 in the landscaping standard?
Yes.
Is it typical... So our language says, a single family, properties are not required to meet proposed plant units for each lot, though they're encouraged to participate. So are we saying that the homes within the development don't need to...
Yeah, they don't have to have landscape. Your landscaping standards are typical for your commercial and industrial developments, not your residential.
Is it a reference to the boulevard trees, or is it the reference to the...
Boulevard trees are still required.
Okay.
And that's standard, but the other thing too is...
And foundation plan things are still required, but...
To me, when I first read it, I thought it was talking about boulevard trees in the language. That was my only thought.
No, their first sentence, they're required. All street boulevards are required to have boulevard trees. So that's still required, but what I was gonna say is this is one of the last agreements where you're gonna see that language in it.
Okay.
We're gonna have to update it with the new land use code.
Okay.
It's just, we kept it for this one because this development, they applied when you guys still had your previous land use code. But yes, boulevard trees are still required.
Okay, I decided the language was a little confusing, but thanks for clarifying that, so.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion for approving the ID agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve, to approve the improvement district agreement for District 2024-3, Deer Creek Estates 2nd and 3rd.
Okay, I got a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 13. ND Cares Program, Jase, you got this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So several months ago, following some discussion with city council staff and some of the council members too, have been putting up information to recruit residents interested in participating in a local steering committee to help guide the ND Cares Program, our community program, within the City of Horace. That steering committee, once it is established, will be responsible for coordinating programs and events that educate and/or honor members of the service members, veterans, families, and survivors, cohorts of the population. Staff has begun to receive some applications from residents that are interested in participating and are now proposing to take the next steps in completing that application to become an ND Cares community. So part of that application process, the city council is required to adopt a resolution to support, which has been included in your packet. Following the adoption of that resolution, just a rough timeline, staff will begin to review submitted applications with the intent to bring forward appointments to the city council meeting on August 5th. Then we'll look to coordinate a committee meeting either that same week or the week following with the hopes of submitting the final application to be considered to become an ND Cares community by mid-August. So with that, unless you guys have any questions, we're just looking to do kind of the next step in the process, and we'll be bringing appointments hopefully in the next coming council meetings and get our application filed for that.
I'm super excited. I've been waiting for this for a long time, so.
Yeah, I have no questions.
Yep, sounds great. I have no questions either.
Okay, I'll look for a motion. Resolution of support.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and then look for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, I can second.
We got Rachel already, that's fine.
Aye.
Well, thank you.
Aye.
Okay, Rachel on the stuff?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Fair enough. Moving on to number 14, temporary funding of improvement bonds. And we have Lucas.
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can start this one, and then we have John Longby with Colliers here. He can answer any more specific questions that you guys might have. The city has obviously created some new improvement districts. To fund those improvement districts, we need to get some temporary bond funds for those projects. So we have the parameters resolution, which is that document that says that the city needs temporary bonds. It sets the pricing committee, it sets a not to exceed amount on the bonds, and then it sets an interest rate not to exceed. And it gives the discretion to the mayor and the city auditor or administrator to negotiate on those bonds up to those dollar amounts. So for this one, it's the temporary improvement bonds for Series 2024B. The projects it covers include water, sewer, storm, and street improvement district, number 2023-1, which is South Hill Farm's 6th Edition, water, sewer, storm, and street improvement district, number 2023-3, Uvetch Drive, water, sewer, storm, and street improvement district, number 2023-4, 64th Avenue, and water and sewer improvement district, number 2024-1, 65th Avenue, water, sewer, storm, and street improvement district, number 2024-3, which is Deer Creek Estates 2nd and 3rd Editions. So the temp bonds, 2024B, cover all of those projects. The maximum power amount of the bonds is not to exceed 23 million, and the maximum net interest cost on the bonds is not to exceed 6.75%. And then pricing committee again being the mayor and the city auditor.
I'm sorry, not to exceed 6.75?
That's correct. And Mr. Longby drove a long ways. If you have questions, I'm sure he'd like to answer them.
Well, I'm new to this, but I am wondering about the system of the double bonding with the temp bond and then rebonding with the permanent bonds. And I'm aware that the communities around here don't do that method. And I'm curious about what... Does it save money to do a temp bond? Is it... What would be the advantage of going through the process twice?
The biggest thing is, one, you're trying to get more accurate special assessment dollar amount. And the other is cash flow for being able to write a check. You know, $23 million, you really can't cash flow 23 million development. Typically, you do the certifications at the end. So you certify the specials. In addition, it gives a little bit more time for the developer to move the lot before the specials actually hit the tax rolls. So there's a couple of different reasons there, but...
The biggest reason for the City of Horace was to have more accurate numbers, so it doesn't overbond for projects and have a large amount sitting in the bond fund throughout the term of...
The project.
The bond.
Yeah.
For the term of the bond.
We don't want overassess.
Sure.
A large amount.
Right. I guess, but case in point, though, when you have to have a fee of 1.25% each time, that gets to be quite a large expense. So just keeping that in mind.
You mean, you mean for a fee for...
For a temp bond, and then we go back and permanently bond. We are getting a fee of 1.25% each time. So that's a lot of money.
The other thing too is a timing standpoint of these projects. They're... When the city, when I first started representing the city, and the city first started doing these projects, it was very common for the city to start a project in the spring, and then we'd get done in the fall. The developments just weren't as big. Now they're larger projects where it's kind of uncertain how long it's actually gonna take, and they're taking two years. And so instead of trying to bond for that duration of the project, I mean, you're not collecting any assessments yet. And so the city has the temp bonds, and then can do the permanent bonds once the project's actually done.
But did you mention that? I mean, is that standard course in all cities? Did you say it was not standard course?
I believe it's not.
So like what West Fargo does is they just bond like a large sum and then just use projects, try to get projects that fill in that amount. And maybe you can speak to better kind of how West Fargo does theirs, but it's, I don't think it's necessarily project specific. It's more of a larger number, and then they fit in their projects to get that amount. What's that?
Are they bundling projects to...
Well, Horace is bundling these too, but I just know that West Fargo doesn't.
Probably more like a line.
Doesn't do it.
Like a line of credit.
Yeah.
So Horace, we try to bond, like when we do a temp bond and a permanent bond, we try to bundle up, bundle the projects. Like on this one, you had a handful of projects, one, two, three, five, five different projects. We try to bundle them all together to help keep costs in mind there, so we're...
Yeah.
Because we do have standard costs that are applicable every single time. And then we have the ones that are based on a percentage. So it does help us on those fixed costs that we have when it's bundled, because it's shared upon the multiple districts there. How other cities can do is some other cities, you know, the bigger ones, they may be able to just file cash flow it themselves. They may be able to do like a line or some other sort of financing mechanism for them. For Horace, like Lucas was talking about, and I was, it was just, we do a temp bond so we can, it acts like a construction loan for us.
Yeah.
And then we have the more accurate cost when we do a certification. And that's where he was talking about, but yeah, John wants to touch base on others.
Yeah, going, it was prior to my time, but back 25 years ago, when West Fargo was experiencing similar growth patterns to Horace's today, it was the same MO or MOU to pull that. But temp bonding was needed because the tax rolls just weren't there. The reserve, the general fund dollars weren't there to be able to dedicate and set aside that funding to pay for that cost until the costs were complete to then permanent bond.
Okay. But it does cost us more to do that process.
It depends how you look at it.
Yeah, in terms of selling two different tranches of debt, yes, there's, there's cost every time we have to go out and sell these bonds. However, I mean, the alternative...
Is there any way to negotiate our fee for that? Because I was looking at a website, and I noticed we are like on the higher end compared to other...
Yeah, so...
Other entities, I guess.
Sure, yep. So, and the fee is negotiable, yes. It's one of those situations where it's, we look at the profile of the debt, the complexity of the credit in assessing that fee, because theoretically, what we're doing is it's not just a, you know, a fee that... I'm not trying to joke, but it's not like a fee that I take home.
No.
It's a fee that, that the lion's share of that fee goes to our bond sales staff to incentivize them to go out and sell bonds. And so there's always a correlated fee. If there's a AA1 City of Bismarck bond issue, the fee could be considerably less. However, the debt profile and everything of the City of Bismarck is apples and oranges compared to the City of Horace, and they're, you know, AA1 credit. It's a lot easier to sell those bonds than it is what, compared to a City of Horace, that would be considered a story bond at this point, because the story of exponential growth is a fabulous story, but it's still something that needs to be explained. And so the more trickier the story, the higher the associated cost gets.
Because what is our rating?
Today, actually, just on the drive over, Moody's reaffirmed its existing outstanding rating of BAA3 for the City of Horace.
And that, that was what it was before?
Correct.
Okay.
It was a reaffirmation of the existing rating that was most recently done in March of this year.
Would that be a similar rating to cities that have recently experienced this much growth?
And then some, yes. It's actually a very strong rating.
Oh, okay.
The, the City of Horace is in a situation where its main challenge is a very positive reason, meaning that it's exponential growth. It's not unfunded pension liabilities of the entire city staff or something like that, of a large city.
So if it's a positive growth, that's giving us kind of a slightly lower credit rating?
Just because of the rate?
Can we negotiate our fee?
Because basically you're saying...
I mean, you're saying it's good, but it's not.
It is good, yep.
But...
Because of our, of our debt load, you're saying we're paying more for it.
Yeah, the credit profile of the city is a unique story. And so unique stories compared to a straightforward story of the state of North Dakota, that's AA2. It, you know, risk goes up, price goes up type of a conversation, not to put it too plainly, but that's basically what it is.
To put it even more plainly, John Shockley explained it to me as, would you rather buy bonds from the United States government or the City of Horace? It's your money, you're gonna put it in the United States government, it's more secure. It's, it's a debt that you'd rather have or take on than the City of Horace. And that's just to put it very plain, so.
I guess it'd be kind of interesting to see maybe a comparison of fees between us and other cities. I recognize that we're not, we're not Fargo, and we're not Bismarck, or we're not West Fargo, but I guess it'd be kind of interesting. I don't know, maybe we have that information already. I've never seen it, I guess, actually.
It's because there... What is another city that's like Horace? With your guys' size and the growth, it doesn't exist. It's Watford City during the oil boom.
Right, so you're saying those fees are always higher, like...
I'm just saying, if you're looking for a comparable, what, like what city is the comparable?
I actually don't even know what our fees are, I guess is what I'm saying. It would be nice to at least know what the fees are and maybe how they compare. I recognize they're not comparable directly to other cities, but it would maybe be informational to know.
Okay. Do we have questions about the temporary bonding for item number 14?
And I'll maybe offer up just market commentary quickly too on the rate. The not to exceed at 6.75, we feel that's about 100 basis points or 1% over where we feel the market would be today. Ironically, given all the turmoil that's happened over the last few years, if you remember the temporary issue that we did in 2023, so the temp rib 2023B bond issue had a 6.75 not to exceed. We came in at 5.74, and the bond coupon was 5 and 1/8, or 5.125 on that issue, and that's what we're thinking it's gonna be for this issue here to, assuming we get an approval.
Okay. Any other questions, Paul?
I don't think so.
No.
Sarah, do you have any further questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, then I'll look for a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the temporary refunding improvement bond Series 2024B, not to exceed 23 million and 6.75%. Did I get that right?
And set the pricing committee as the mayor and city auditor.
What?
Set the pricing committee as the mayor and city auditor.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so we're on the fun one now. Special assessment policy. I'll let Brenton take this one for a while.
Okay. So Nick is passing out maps. Sarah, you should have received the email here just a little bit ago with the PDFs of the maps. Nick is passing out. And Jase can bring it up on the screen also.
Thank you. Each of us has one.
I'll take a minute.
Well, thank you. This is just me here, and one project here. Is that the only change? No, the other one's one. I had a one.
So just to touch base first, you have, you should have a copy of proposed special assessment, the changes, like a summary sheet to touch base or highlight what you have in front of you. The first part is regards to local improvement. Within this, within our update for the special assessment policy, we're primarily focusing on the street use factor at this time. The first suggested or recommended change or proposed change is to take local improvements. So that would be isolated improvements such as the neighborhood or, um, new subdivision, even maybe just a specific street. And handle those as we had before our special assessment policy and not apply load factoring to them. Load factoring, you'll see where our current load factoring is on the middle of that sheet, and I'll discuss that in just a minute. However, for the local improvements, uh, the primary methods for each of the assessments are sanitary sewer main is based on front footage. Sanctuary service is at each. Water main is front footage. Water service is each. General work is by area. Storm sewer is typically done by area and street is typically done by front footage. It's not to say that there may not be a different or another means to evaluate it depending on the district. Like street might be based on area or each. It just depends on each dynamic, what's going on. But the, the primary method or most common is just highlighted there. So it gives you an idea of how we evaluate those. When we get into regional, what we're finding is regional, uh, regional projects really is where the load fact, street use load factoring would apply. And what we're finding with those projects is that, that's typically where we see the, the, the need and benefit for that. Uh, within our policy, we currently address single family as one per parcel, multi-family as one per unit. Public, so parks, ponds and other city property is a five per acre. Churches is 25 per acre. Schools are 45 per acre. Industrial is 25 per acre and commercial is 50 per acre. So what that does is it takes, uh, the factoring, like a comparison, if you want to look at, we look at like a single family right now. We say one per parcel. Well, we get into a little deeper in the next section where we talk about residential. If it's not developed or any other areas, we convert it using equivalent units. And we say three units equal one acre. So to give you, go back to our current factoring, if you look at commercial, we have 50 per acre for that. And that would be equivalent for area wise as three residential lots. The proposed factoring, so we did have a workshop last Wednesday to talk about the, a proposed concept to where we had single family residential and ag as a one for load factoring. So it really, it would be a neutral amount, but if it was a, or it would be a one per parcel. And then if it's not developed for residential or ag, is three units per acre times the number of acres. Then what we proposed was to group all the other categories, so churches, schools, industrial, commercial, uh, public into other, which would be a two per acre. You have the equivalent units, which would be three. So it'd be a total of six, like equivalent to six houses per acre. So try to translate that out. It gets a little tricky there. Overall feedback, council, we had good discussion on it, but there were concerns about, um, how does that, you know, should we maintain categories like we had before or not? Should we have different load factrings for different uses? Council member Landstrom reached out to me towards the latter part of last week and provided a suggestion for conversation tonight. And I appreciate that to where we have the, the same, similar structure, but it would be single family residential is one per parcel. So it's already platted out. It's one per parcel. If it's not platted out yet and not being intended to use for individual homes, it's three units per acre times acres. So basically what we do already right now. For multi-family, it's one unit per acre if it's already developed. So if you already have multi-family there, it's already developed, it's one per unit. Or not per acre, it's one per unit. So if you have like an apartment building with 36, uh, apartments there, it'd be 36 units. Then what we do, what we get into is areas that would have a load factor of two. It'd be three units per acre times acres times a two load factor. These are regional projects and what we're suggesting tonight would be a public, for public, parks, ponds, emergency services, lift stations, et cetera. Would be follow, would fall under the two load factor. Then a three load factor, so three units per acre times acres times a three load factor would be other. But we include within there, public city hall and public works. Those are, since there's, they'd be standalone, they would be vertical building, they'd be buildings, vertical. May have traffic going in and out more than, you know, like a lift station or, uh, even like a fire hall, like the fire hall here. So emergency services, fire hall would fall under the two. But public city hall and public works, the facility, non-developed multifamily, churches, schools, industrial, commercial and mixed use. So they would all have a load factor of three. The intentions or the thought process behind that is we have a fairly good idea where, um, a single family will likely fall within our community. Homes. We have a fairly good idea where the other will fall. But you may have times where you have mixed uses or mixed, yeah, mixed uses like commercial and multifamily. Or church with commercial. Where at the time of the assessment, that was, you know, it might've been just church. But you look at down the road, maybe it sold off some land and I'll take like the Lakeview development, for example. The Lakeview development was owned by the diocese. A portion of it sold, a portion was retained. And then they're looking at, you know, they built the parish hall, they build a church. That's the next step. And the third step they've indicated to us over time was to build a school. So you'd have in that one, churches and schools, which currently right now have different load factrings. This would put them all on the same playing field. So, uh, if a multi-use exists with a different load factoring, the higher load factoring would apply. So in a situation, all hypothetical, let's say you have, um, I'll take like a commercial with parks. Parks at, say Parks builds a facility and then it's tied with commercial right next to it. It would be load factored at commercial. So whatever the higher of the two is, that's what it'd be. The other component of the street use factoring would be a project driver. So we talked about project driver during the workshop and at previous council meetings, uh, staff originally, we proposed a point five of a project driver. Council at the workshop discussed should be a point five or a one or somewhere there in between. So what the project driver is, project driver is the area that petitioned for the project. So let's say you have a new development come in, drove the project, that's a regional project. They would be a project driver. And the other component is, and/or has a greater impact on infrastructure needs that are or or expected to be built. So let's say you have, um, a facility that generates a lot, is, you know, it's going to generate a lot more traffic. Say the facility already exists. It could be a church, it could be a schools, it could be a park, whatever. If our engineering sees it necessary to account for that and factor that within the road design. And they, even if they didn't petition for the improvement, but they're impacting the traffic or the impacts of what we're designing, then they could be identified as a project driver also. With the scenario, so I broke out the three units per acre, let's say add a one acre and load factor of three. If you have a project driver of point five, it'd make you a 3.5 and it would end up being 10.5 per acre. That would be the highest number per acre that you'd have. If it was a project driver of one, it brings it to a four. So you'd have 12 per acre. That comparison would be three houses per acre to either 12 or 10.5 with this scenario. We do have, what you have in front of you is you have a couple, two packets. And Sarah, you should have this as a PDF. Um, we emailed so you could follow along too. The first one in the upper left-hand corner, it says proposed assessment policy using project driver of a point five. Now what we did is we took a district and we gave it a made up cost. That way we're not comparing, trying to compare, anybody could keep, they wouldn't compare any numbers assigned with this. And we labeled it sample district. We gave it a, a made up cost of $5 million to help us illustrate how it would work out. And let's say this is a street project straight up.
Lucas, can you turn the light down so people can see it?
Yep.
Or somebody?
Shut the lights right there.
Couple of lights there. Okay? So we apologize, it's pretty small here. I know we have to zoom in or get our magnifying glasses out. May have to give those as, as track items in the future, magnifying glasses. But either way, when you look at the first page, it gives you a percent, percentage of how much each parcel with the scenario would have of a cost share of the project, given a point five project driver and giving the proposal that I just discussed here with, uh, load factrings being between one, two or three. What you see, the area identified in the yellow hash area is an example of a project driver. So we, we did use the Eighth Avenue project as a concept, but like I said, different numbers.
Yep.
Everything of that. So what you'll see with the point five project driver, a residential lot would be a point zero zero, or point zero six percent of the project. Where a project or a residential lot within the project driver area makes up point zero eight percent of that. Does that make sense so far?
Yep.
Okay. We factor in like the trailer, the trailer court there, that makes up 1.3, 1.24 percent. And that's based on each. If you go to the next page, page two, it identifies what the equivalent units or units would be. So if you have those larger tracts of land, that's where you'll see equivalent units applied. For example, like the lagoons, the far east lot for the lagoon is 152.2. That's assuming a load factor of two for that lot. Also, the, just to south of it, you see that blue parcel there, or actually the blue parcel there, that's kinda, or it's kinda like a light blue. Aqua color almost. That would be like public works, potential site for public works. And that's an 81.2 based on the acreage there. But that has a load factoring of three. Another comparison for you though, is if you look in the middle of, we call it, as staff, we call it the racetrack area. That's parkland within the Sparks addition. It's at 20.5. So that has a load factoring of point five. The total load factor amount is 2.5. Are any questions about the units for this one? When we go to one, it'll be easier to compare also side by side, but it gives you, I just wanna make sure everybody knows how we got from point A to point B for each one.
Got it.
The next one, page three, identifies an example of what the cost would be. So like I said, keep in mind, if this was a $5 million project, 5 million, um, what's this? A residential lot would come in at $2,821. And then a residential lot that is in the project driven area would be $4,232. That's with a point five project driver. If you look at, say, other, other city spaces like pond in the project driver area, it's hard to do a comparisons, cause they aren't each per se. They can't give you an exact lot size wise, but it gives you an idea. You can see where the project driven areas are up a little higher. And then if you go to the last page, this one's a little easier to kinda analyze the costs there. That's where we have some examples here. So we'll look at, um, look at a current city hall lot. It's point four three acres just for the city hall lot. Three units per acre times acre times load factor of three, cause it's where our city, our city hall is right now. Equivalent units comes out to 3.8. It would be a special assessment of $10,810 and a cost share of point two two percent of the district. If you look at the other site for city hall though, comparison, which is Dawn Sparks there on that northeast corner, it's a little hard to see on the screen. Oh, now I can see it. Jase did a good job zooming in. Five acres, three units per acre times acres, times a load factor of three plus point five, comes out to 52.5. 52.5 equivalent units. The assessment would be 148,213 and it makes up 2.96. So keep that page, I would suggest you keep that page open. It's easier to compare. And I'll go on the project driver of one to give you a comparison, but we'll go right to the last page right away. Since we talked about the concepts already. And just to give you a comparison of how that driver would impact, we'll look, we'll compare the two city hall sites first. So our current city hall, your equivalent units come out to 3.8 still. The dollar amount doesn't change, but the cost share, well, the dollar amount is slightly different. It's $10,191 and the cost share is point two percent. If you look though in the project driver area, you'll notice that the equivalent units goes from a 52.5 to a 60. The cost off of that would be 159,691 and it would make up 3.19 percent of the district. That's it, that's what you do difference wise with a one versus a point five for your project driver. Uh, overall feedback from special assessment commission, uh, and general conversation. It seemed to be that the project driver is well received, the concept of it. It was just a matter of where the most appropriate place should be. A point five, a one, somewhere in between. That's where I believe we left off on that. A concern I do have, you know, going back to our initial summary sheet here for the use factoring, is by having these grouped together, other, and a lot of these categories where they may interchange a little bit or land may change hands, it allows us to be fairly consistent still. You don't have a situation where one type of use, have the land specials are certified for one project. They end up selling it and then this factor a totally different way down the road. They're all fairly, uh, equal there. So. But with that, if you had questions regarding street use factoring, I could expand on that. Area, something to consider on the back of our summary sheet, I just wanna highlight this really quick. There's three spots that have a highlight for single family residential, non-developed. This is for the water sewer use. This is for the water sewer use factoring, multi-family, non-developed, and then mixed use. We don't address any of those three categories specifically within our policy, like mixed use, we do not address at all right now. So, I would be looking at if council does have feedback or concerns about what we do for those, that would be helpful. Also, ag would fall under single-family residential, non-developed. And then, one idea that was brought up was for multi-family, non-developed, instead of being a three per acre, to be a twelve per acre. The logic behind that is twelve, or at least from my perspective, would be, multi-family, you know, is going to have more impacts on a sewer and water system. Because you're going to have, let's say you have thirty apartments, well, you're going to have multiple toilets compared to like commercial. You're likely not going to have thirty toilets within a commercial. Think of like Walmart, how many, how many toilets are probably connected into the Walmart store? Maybe a dozen or so for the whole building where an apartment building, you're going to have maybe one, one toilet, a sink. You're going to have a shower, another sink, so you're going to have multiple fixtures going into that, so. That was, that was at least from what I could, what I would see as the logic of saying multi-family would be higher because they would eventually build. And if they built the building, then it would be a, based on the units, which often is higher. Any questions so far, or any feedback or concerns and preferences of what route council would like to go?
Are we opening it up to public first before we give our thoughts, or are we?
That would be up to Jeff here, council.
I would prefer that, before we start getting our.
Do you guys want to do public comment? Okay, I'll open it up to public comments first then, see what you guys have to say. Chris, you ought to know something.
Not to put you on the spot.
So, you don't know me, I'm Chris Mack, I'm with Christianson Companies, work on a lot of developments in the city of Horace. I like the simplification, I guess the, one concern that I do have, if something is approved, if this is what is approved tonight, I think it will work. Compared to what we were running into last year with some of the numbers were way off, between commercial and schools and the assessments were just so high. So, we had to kind of go off of the policy completely. And I know we want a policy that will actually work and make sense for all future developments. So, if something is approved, I guess, use it through this round, I know there's like four, or three or four districts that are going to come through. So, if we do run into some issues, we can address it, so it's, if whatever is approved tonight is approved, it's not like in stone. Thing would, I mean, I argued several meetings with old policy and, so I think this will work, but until actually putting it a hundred percent into real world situations. I guess, my point is have the council be open to making tweaks, at least for this first round, as we actually see it being used in real-world application. And then, make the adjustments and then, if it works, then.
So, like you don't want us to approve it, you're asking us to not approve it and to just trial it, is what you're asking?
I'm saying approve it, so then you have the policy to follow, but like a lot of this stuff, you've got to make adjustments to it. Oh, this didn't work, this is what we ran into last year with South Dale Farms Third Edition. We tried making adjustments to the current policy and what we thought was going to work, didn't work. And the numbers weren't coming in the way we wanted them, or the way it actually made sense and made it fair for commercial and the other uses. So, I guess that's what I'm saying. If this policy, once we do use it in a real world application, if it doesn't make a lot of sense, or if there's numbers where commercial's getting hit too hard or residential's getting hit too hard, make that decision before the certification to where it's all, let's put the policy says, say, oh, we need to make adjustments of the policy and then make the adjustment after all the certifications for this year's assessments are out, I guess, that's the comment I have. Does that make sense?
Others?
Well, my name's Tom Samuelson and with Winnie Development and also have a trustee for the Ed Samuelson Trust. And we have the Lost River West applications, Jackson Alley, the Horace Energy Park. Appreciate the improvement of the special assessment policy overall, you know, but I'm opposed to the project driver. It focuses on the timing of the development, not the benefit of any regional improvement. My family's been part of the community since eighteen ninety-one, you know, living west of the Cheyenne. Westbrook was planted in seventy-six, La-Z-ee was planted in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, River's Edge in two thousand fifteen. All those developments had negative impacts on Wall Avenue. I don't believe Lost River residents should pay more for the construction of Wall Avenue than a resident of Westbrook or River's Edge. Lost River may have been the straw that kind of broke the camel's back on that road. But because of the number of homes in Lost River, Lost River will pay for the majority of the cost of that Wall Avenue, because they have that many more homes. You know, I support paying the fair share, but believe the costs of infrastructure should be taxed based on benefit, not who came first or who developed what. So, the project driver is, is an issue for us that, everybody benefits from a project, you know. The timing of the project isn't a factor in who's benefiting. And, you know, it may drive, drive a project, but an overall district is getting the same improvements and the same benefits.
Mr. Samuelson, you do realize though, like with Wall, like let's just take Wall Avenue districts for example. We might not have had a project driver on a policy, but the way that the districts were set up kind of is like a project driver. The way the districts were split up between the east and the west side. So, it's kind of, I mean, in my opinion, council already kind of set that up as a project driver in a way, don't you agree?
In that specific?
In that specific instance.
Well, I mean, you know, the factor you're adding to a new project of point five or one, you know, like in your example, you know, twenty-eight hundred versus forty-two hundred approximately in, in specials, you know. Those people paying twenty-eight hundred are getting the same improvement, because it's a regional improvement. They're getting the same benefit, but you're charging somebody else more than you're charging them because they came later. I'm saying that's what I'm opposed to.
So, let me ask you a question. Hypothetically, we have a special assessment committee that reviews all of the properties to determine benefit and how much each person should be paying, or each property, excuse me, should be paying. The, they have the discretion to move money around for lack of better words. By having this driver in there, it helps them identify who is asking for that improvement. Instead of them having to do it themselves to do it, it is being shown as to where the project was requested from. And even if it was not in this policy, is it still something that that committee would go back and identify as to, okay, who asked for this? Should they be paying a little bit more? And that is out of, I want to say, our control initially, in the sense that they're the ones determining the appropriate amount of assessment of a project. And so, what we have been asked to do from whether it's developers or even residents, is put together a policy so that they have an understanding of what they might be paying. You know, based on what we have written in our policy. And if, if we don't have something like that in there and all of a sudden our committee comes back and moves money around, like I said, for lack of better words. It, it might not line up with what somebody was expecting to pay. Do you understand that logic?
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, you know, on a regional project where, you know, like Wall Avenue was being assessed to the north, to the south. You know, or to major road, okay, there's a certain benefit that's applied to that. It isn't Lost River that alone that would be the project driver, because River's Edge benefited, you know, Westbrook benefited, La-Z-ee benefited. Everybody benefits on a regional one. We're not talking about a specific, you know, project and having to, you know, like, you know, Jackson Alley, we need to do a road there, you know. And that'll be assessed to that property, you know, the north-south road, you know, to pave that road. I, I get that and we're willing to do that, but on the other hand, you know, assessing, you know, you do a whole region that you're doing something to benefit the whole region, not one project, but the whole region, you know. That should be, you know, that's where I'm opposed is, is in that sense that, you know, everybody's getting the same benefit, but somebody's paying more for it than the other one. That's what the project, that's what the project driver does.
I guess I, I sympathize with that a little bit, but at the same time, like no districts are the same. Like, I'm looking at this for example, if we have, if we did not have Sparks going in, Eighth Avenue, technically, we, that road is not needed. So, all of those people up north were just fine for years without Eighth Avenue going in. That road is now going in because of the Sparks development. They petitioned to put the road in. I, I do believe that that would be a project driver, because that road, yes, all the people up north in this district are in the district because they are getting a benefit, but they were doing just fine without the road. And they didn't petition to have it in, there was no reason to put it in until that development came along. That's my point of view, I don't know how you guys feel about that. I personally like the project driver, because I think that pulling, pulling all of these residents along and, and making them pay for something that they absolutely didn't need in the first place to benefit somebody that's coming in to the south of them. I don't know if that's truly fair. I mean, yeah, they get a benefit to the road, which is why they're in the district. But it didn't, the road didn't have to be there until that development came back in. So, every district is different and I do agree with Jeff that if we have the ability with the special assessment committee to be able to be like, hey, do we need a project driver? Yes. Do we not need a project driver? Great, we don't need one. I think that leaving that up to the special assessment committee is important, because no district is going to be the same. You might not have a project driver. You know what I mean? You might not have a project driver in every single district.
Just a quick question, so like Sixty-Sixth Street, that would be an example, that's a city up in South Dale Farms. That's a city-driven road, no project driver on that, correct? Or Sixty-Fourth Avenue would do the same?
Sixty-Fourth was petitioned, correct?
Neither of them were.
Sixty-Fourth was petitioned?
Those are city, I believe are city-driven ones.
Those are, those are city projects, but let me, let me put two cents in here. Sixty-Sixth could easily have been an asphalt road. I will tell you that Sixty-Sixth, some very significant thought and effort was put into it, because in future planning, the schools, West Hargle Public Schools owns a lot to the north, as does the Park District. There is potential for an elementary school to go up there. This road would have to sustain some very significant bus traffic between the schools, that being the, the new high school, the new middle school, and the potential future elementary school. So, in this particular case, additional means and methods were utilized to support that type of traffic, even though we don't have a formal plat for, a formal plan for the school, simply knowing that there will be a future school site there. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. Eighth is a weird one though, because there are a lot of people who don't benefit from Eighth on this, that are shaded yellow, so that's maybe not, I could see a project driver. I understand what you're saying by each project is quite different. I guess I just think it's important to let the special assessment committee make the determinations and utilize the tools that they are, that are out of their hands, that they can decide. Yes, there should be a project driver, no, we agree that there shouldn't be. And giving them a little bit more ability to, to make the right calls, because if we tie their hands, that's when things get messy. So, that's my opinion, I like the project driver, I would like to keep the project driver.
I like it too, I think, I mean, kind of, I guess, kind of what Naomi said. I, I wouldn't be opposed to leaving the project driver within the hands completely of the special assessment commission. I mean, that's something maybe to consider, allowing, because I think our special assessment commission does a really good job, they work really hard on these, to give them the latitude as we recognize that each project, each district is different, because they're all unique, to, maybe we give some direction to them to say, you have an ability to, to add a project driver if you so choose from maybe, maybe like zero to one, as they have evaluated the district. And then, that also gives people at that time an opportunity to plead their case to the special assessment commission. I mean, Wall Avenue is kind of an interesting example.
Right.
It is already split out between east and west, west is paying for both sides, east is paying just for east. Maybe that is the, maybe that is the project driver for the project. The fact that there was an acknowledgement on the front end that the road was created for the new development. Right now, River's Edge and Lost River, for, maybe that in and of itself is the project driver for that project. But in other projects, I think it's important to give, I mean, we can either decide that we're going to do some allocation here or we're going to give full discretion to the assessment commission.
I, I know Brock was going to speak during the public comments section.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Forgive the interruption there, that was Rachel speaking. I do want to be clear that it would make sense and there would be some weight behind giving the discretion to the special assessment commission to put into place possibly a sliding scale for a project driver, so that they can be more objective and subjective based on the specific needs of each individual project and weighing the benefits behind such. I think we may have an opportunity here to tilt the bridge with one stone and, and recognize the concern that Mr. Mack and Mr. Samuelson.
and recognize the concern that Mr. Back and Mr. Sandisome have brought forth, but also be able to appropriately weight that. And I would not be opposed to giving a sliding scale up to a a certain percentage or a unit or a rate of some kind to our special assessment committee because I think that they are the most well, well-positioned folks to make those determinations.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, and I I do want to add a little bit, but I I liked the discussion, I liked whatever body was saying, so I just kind of wanted to hear how it all played out too. And um, I agree, so I guess I'm here to speak, I work for Dwyer Law, I'm here to speak on behalf of my clients, me and Nancy Sparks, and they're the development here, that that is the example. And I know it's just used for example purposes here, no real numbers or anything like that. But I think it's important, you know, at the end of the day, like what you guys are saying, to have potentially a sliding scale, not just a a base saying, well, you're the project driver, you get this extra assessment just based off of you being the last one to develop. And I think it's important, and it's a good example for Sparks here where, you know, I agree kind of what with what you're saying where, um, you know, this is a regional assessment district and the properties to the north were existing just fine without Eighth Avenue. But the same could be said that Sparks, you know, would have existed just fine without Eighth Avenue as well. So the reason-
But they put it in the plat, though, let's not forget that, you know.
Right, but the reason is for connectivity for the city. So it's because there's Nelson, Third, Fourth. And and, you know, just to make the city work and flow correctly, you obviously need to have Eighth Avenue there. It's in the middle of two large sections of town. So in that scenario, you know, I think it's important, you know, like you guys said, potentially be able to make your case to the assessment um committee or whoever determines those specials to say, hey, you know, this is the reasons why we don't think we should have a a one or whatever you guys, a point five um project driver, maybe it's, you know, it slides depending on what the project is. I think that's a smart idea. Um, just just for, just because, you know, in that um residential district there on Third, you can kind of see where it's notched out, it's hard to just point, but right here, that is right-of-way that was dedicated, that I believe it was nineteen ninety-three when that development was put in. So they knew that they were gonna need right-of-way there for development coming to the south. So to me now, it just seems a little unfair that Sparks then would get hit with a project driver when everyone was aware and that they were, that it would be coming, that road was going to need to go through at some point. And they dedicated the land knowing, or should have known, well, I don't think they would have dedicated it, that base was going to get extended at some point, kind of, maybe, you know, like it's like now, thirty years down the road.
I don't know, I find that a little bit hard to believe just because even on our twenty forty-five plan, that road was non-existent, it was not even a thought in, and we had hired consultants back before I came on this council. Um, so I personally, I I get what you're saying, but I just want to make sure that we understand too, like, we have documents that outline twenty forty-five, and that road was non-existent.
Well, it was plotted in there in nineteen ninety-three, so it's on the, it's on the original.
But but the city did not, they decided that they were gonna add Park Drive East. I I'm gonna hone in on that because I'm gonna stand by what I said before. Park Drive East was supposed to be the collector road there, the, or the, the, the local collector there, not Eighth Avenue. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're not-
And and maybe I, you know, maybe not a collector, but knowing that down the road, there's probably going to be development to the south, so saying, hey, we don't need it right now, we might need it in the future, we plotted this road for that purpose. You know, I don't know, things can get lost in thirty years-
Yeah, absolutely.
And confusion and stuff like that. But I just, my point is, I do think it's important to have that sliding scale, be able to, you know, pitch why you think you should or shouldn't be a project driver because I'm sure there is going to be situations where somebody's putting something in where it's obvious that it's going to, you know, blow up traffic or do something like that. So it makes sense for there to be a project driver in that, in that scenario. But I think it should just be something where people can take their time to pitch their case, basically, to the powers that are, to kind of have that um scenario. So I guess my, my clients just wanted me to make that clear, and they felt the same way as Tom, that um the policy just has a flat rate if it's no sliding scale or anything like that, that it would penalize um landowners who waited to develop. And it's based more so on timing than the actual benefit of the regional improvements.
Yeah, I like, I mean, I just think that the the districts, none of them are gonna be the same. There's always gonna be different uh circumstances. Um, I think giving that power to the special assessment committee to, you know, be able to determine what kind of project driver, if any, could be applied and on a sliding scale is important. So I would, I like that.
Brent, have a question. So um, the pages we looked at before from the meeting we had last week, they, we had used a C H S lot and as it, as an example, it's hard to read it, but where it had gone from forty-nine thousand down to sixteen or something like that, right? Um, with the new system where it was a two, two to one. And I didn't quite realize um that we changed it to three to one.
So we had a two to one, and then council was asking for-
Right.
To do something in between.
Another category, yes.
And so that's where we have this-
Yeah.
Concept there. Uh, it is very difficult to try to compare the numbers per se.
Well, I've been doing it.
Because we changed the pro, the project cost number.
Yeah.
So that project was around three point one million. We're trying to make it to where it's a totally standalone, it's not, we use the Eighth Avenue district because we like the example of it.
Yeah.
But we changed the dollar amounts for this for today, so it was to be focused strictly on like the project driver and the effects of this because we didn't want this to come back over and over with Eighth Avenue.
Sure.
Down, you know, years down the road, that's not the intentions of that. So that's why we had a different dollar amount and everything for the conversation tonight. So that's why they don't match up as you said.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. I also, though, so then we went back to having more categories in the new system. And I think we split out commercial and schools because of the heavy burden they place on infrastructure. Wasn't that what it was talked about? But I also have been thinking a lot about how it brings um a lot of amenities, like, commercial would open up um property to sales taxes, we all know. And so encouraging commercial businesses to be here, I do think is super important. And so I think simplifying it, but making it, and schools too. I think a lot of people move out here because the schools are so close. So the short term is looking at the heavy burden they place on the infrastructure, but I think the long term, the commercial and schools, those were the ones that were mentioned as being heavy on roads and sewers, um, they also are really attractive to people, and I think it's long-term um benefit to residents, and it also would be long-term, I mean, I think it would be beneficial financially to residents as well, to have more commercial here and make it more friendly.
So that's one of the benefits other with this.
Right, I see that.
One of the benefits with this proposed load factoring, even the one, the concept that was brought forward to council during the workshop, and even the one tonight, both of them do have some significant changes to that.
Yeah.
Load factoring overall, when you look at, like, right now, if we have a load factoring at a one, like I mentioned, if you broke out cost per acre, the units would be twelve units per acre.
Right.
Is the worst-case scenario. And uh currently, we have a fifty to one in worst-case scenario.
Yeah. It's definitely- It's definitely better, it's more friendly.
For, I I say a twelve, it's really a one to four, so three to twelve, and then it would be a three to fifty. So that's right now how it works. And this, this has branched in, and part of the reason for having more categories too is to just be very clear and specific and try to eliminate any misinterpretations or loopholes or anything of like where we address non-developed land for multifamily or, or maybe for single-family and for multifamily.
Yeah.
We we didn't call them out, or mixed use, we didn't call them out specifically. So that's part of why you have more categories, because we try to be more specific to throw it down. When you look at how the math works, it still ends up being just a few categories, so.
Looking at that lot here, it does help quite a bit. It goes from three hundred and three thousand dollars down to two hundred and seven or one ninety-two, right? It does, it is really beneficial. It might be super hard to um sell commercial space if it is assessed at such a high rate, which is, I think, we step in the right direction.
And I think, I think as we all know, I mean, the, the special assessment policy of factoring is not, is not meant to be punitive, but it it serves a purpose because we have to acknowledge the different uses of the infrastructure, streets, water, sewer, um, and and that's, and I mean, I I recognize that this development is important too, but we absolutely do have to acknowledge. And I I think that what we've come together here is closer, maybe, to what we're hoping to do as an acknowledgement of the additional use of some of those um types of, types of development.
Yeah.
And I know this looked a little bit different, but I detected a bit-
It did, it looked so different last week, I'm so surprised.
I apologize, yeah, so I had reached out to Breton and asked him, and I think I sent an email to everyone that I asked him, I don't, I didn't have the magic crystal ball, but it just says, to further the conversation, um, to kind of throw a few different ideas, and then it actually evolved just a little bit um today too. And you know, doing the, the u, the load factor of one, two, three, and then the three units per acre, it does amplify, it does, it does amplify those uh cost burdens. I think, at least we're moving in the right direction, I think, of the acknowledgement of the use.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can we talk to the pastors they both were raising their heads?
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just curious if public comment was still up, and I appreciate that. And did I have a question, Stephanie, in something you were just mentioning and acknowledging the different impacts of projects? Um, and I do know, it's been referenced, the current policy was developed by some research that the, that the city hired out, and there was a very widespread between some of these uses that we're now categorizing them together. And um, I guess my own particular use being elevated quite significantly in this simplification, I'm just curious in the rationale that would be going behind, saying, you know, if I'm understanding this correctly, you know, a multifamily apartment complex with daily use of all those people, in and out, toilets, all that, versus something like what we would be trying to accomplish, just the roadway impacts from like the school versus what we're doing, like, I understand the simplification from, you know, if it's undeveloped, you don't know what it's gonna be, all of those considerations as they've been brought up, but it feels a, a few steps farther down the road of simplification, I guess, which has been mentioned as well. Because on the incentivizing commercial development, I mean, I understand that as well. I know I'm looking at other municipalities and for our own organization, other options and houses working elsewhere, there is funding from sales tax and all that stuff. Um, but that really just comes down to a combination of assessments and price. If you're selling the land, well, you're, you're driving the price of the land down perhaps if the assessments are there, because ultimately it's coming to be a total price. And I believe some of the opinions are influenced by that perhaps because if the assessments are treating certain properties differently, it does ultimately affect how much that price is. Because if you want to incentivize commercial stores, just give the land away, I think someone will build you a grocery store very quick if you just give them property. Those are some thoughts that were coming through my mind. If there's anything anyone wants to respond to, but I can-
Do you, do you feel, do you, do you feel that his, his comment about the church, like a church property, right?
Yeah.
Do you feel that that is a, a, an amplification, too much of an amplification with a consolidation of what we've done here?
In my opinion, I think you could go, you could justify a three or two load factoring, but at the same time, the churches have at times, in Horace, for example, we've had church entities own land and then break off some for development. Not saying that all would do that, but I am saying that you, you have examples of that already have occurred in Horace. And if you had had this policy or anything else, like if this, the proposed structure we're talking about tonight, if you would have had, if we would have had that uh a couple year, you know, five years ago, it would have had interesting impacts on special assessments of previous districts that we had. It it would have been interesting in the aspect of you would have had a lot of those areas have been treated fairly similar across the board. Like, we would have known, okay, here's this type of use, we would have been able to fall upon our future land use map and go, okay, here's our use, but the dollar amount would have been fairly similar across the board. So I I look at that going, is this a big change from what we had before? Quite a bit. Is it give the city flexibility so if a use does change later, without the specials really being drastically different or having a situation where a lower cost per acre, or not cost per acre, but a lower impact area, like in our current setup, having a different use other than commercial, for example, holding a property until, you know, for five or ten years and then it sells off and then it becomes commercial, well, you may have had a whole bunch, or a handful of different districts that have been at a lower amount. And I'm not saying that any entities would do that for sure, it's just that we've had actual situations where it's changed hands and it's changed use in Horace. So that's why we're trying, that's why we're coming from the angle of be consistent and also each of these categories, typically a regional project, do have a little bit more benefit from the angle of, like, a regional project, you're looking at regional projects are typically for roads, looking at collector roads or arterials. Typically, these uses are located near those collector roads and arterials. They're going to feed off of those. Where you may have residential houses that are, you have to take that collector arterial and then another local street, and then another local street to get to the house. So that is part of the logic too. Also, various uses here may feed directly off of that arterial road or collector. I'll take Sixty-Fourth, for example, I was talking to Chris earlier today of along Sixty-Fourth, you know, they see that being commercial on the south side, correct, Chris, is, you're looking at that?
Correct.
And I jokingly would say, Chris, I'd say, Chris, when Sixty-Fourth is done, within the next couple of years, you're gonna come to us and probably want turn lane somewhere. Yeah? Well, they're having access come directly off of that road right to those parcels. So would they have, could you say they have a different art, you know, benefit than a residential house that has to take Sixty-Fourth to Sixty-Sixth to a local street to maybe another local street? Yeah, makes sense. So it depends how you want to look at it. But I think it's a big change from what we had before, or currently. And it does keep it consistent to where we don't have to, okay, what was this use back then or what is it now? It's cleaner. And we are trying to keep it pretty simple, yes, it grew. We're still trying to add a simplicity, but also we're looking at it as it being very direct and saying, this is how we're gonna look at it. And like I mentioned before, even the loopholes, like identifying, how are we addressing ag or mixed use? We didn't have mixed use as a category, how do we address that? We're being more direct on that, so those are some benefits.
Pastor Davis?
Uh, if I could make a comment-
Uh, if I could make a comment first, I'm Dr. David Narud, I'm the pastor of my community church that actually meets in this suite, so. Mayor, council, folks with name boards over there. I wanna, obviously, I want to talk about the church aspect as the newest, new kids on the block here in Horace, hopefully staying. Brett, you, you brought up, this church did that, and this church did that. I don't know how many churches have been here in the history, a hundred and fifty year history of Horace that have sold properties to do whatever, whatever. But your assessment of saying, well, a church could do this, so we're gonna lump them there, I think is woefully misplaced, I think you've put a sheep in with a goat, truly. Uh, to continue with your train of thought, you talked about a business, a manufacturing plant that has four toilets and a Walmart that has X number toilet. The level of traffic and use in a Walmart is exponentially greater than a business in the area. And even more so for a church, you're talking about a facility that's generally used in its entirety one day of the week versus all the, and I, I don't remember all the things you listed for the category of three, but everything you listed to includes, I believe schools are in the category three? Which are used daily by hundreds of children, people, versus a church that's used generally in its entirety one day of the week by fifty to two hundred, maybe? And so I think, I was encouraged to hear that there should be more talk about different categories, because you have, you, in my opinion, which I waited to be the last to talk, and try not to belabor this any longer than need be, but truly, you've just thrown churches in with all of those other entities, because there was no other place to put it. I'm suggesting you make a place for churches to be separate from everything else, because it's not residential, it's not commercial, it's not business. And if the city would love to give the churches free properties to put buildings, as my friend said, I'm kidding, obviously. But what I am saying is this really needs a lot more consideration, because in no way, shape, form, or fashion does a church facility operate like the other things you've put it in the category with. It does not belong in that category. It functions nothing like them and has no purpose like them. And to say that, well, they might sell a piece of property and put retail there, you're penalizing churches, and hopefully future churches, which, okay, I'm not from Horace, I live in West Fargo. I started the church here, one, because God told me to, and two, because that, this is the area that we want it to be in. And it would be easier, more practical, everything else, to be somewhere else, but this is where we profess God has put us. And what's wonderful is to be here at this stage, to hear this talk, just the amount of effort you guys are putting into this is incredibly encouraging. No one has the ability to go back in time and fix everything. I've, I've listened to three hours of hundred-year-old problems of easements. And so I commend the city and the staff for looking at this, but I really think it needs a lot more attention and another category to put churches in its own, unless you can convince me, sir, that a church is exactly like a Walmart. So unless anybody has a question through me.
Can I, can I, can I step in and, and address this gentleman's comments?
Go ahead, you got the floor. Can you hear, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so this is Sarah. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend in person, I'm in Texas right now for work, but I, I wanted to address your comments, because I, I do believe that you put the nail on the head, sir, that you are absolutely correct, that we have so many different uses of so many different properties, that it is extremely difficult for us as a council to really put the nail in the coffin for exactly what the use is gonna be for each and every single property, which is why we're asking for leverage. I, I will tell you, and I, I ask you too on this, because I, I will tell you what comes to mind when I, I think of my church, Horace Lutheran Church, which, this is a church that I currently attend, I, I'm very active in. Not only do they have services one day a week, on Sundays, clearly, they have services on Wednesday evenings too. They also host a myriad of funerals and weddings throughout the week. Uh, they have Sunday school, they have confirmations. That church in Horace is a plethora for a lot of other entities, such as the Boy Scouts of America, the Girl Scouts of America, Bio Girls has activities that are there quite frequently, amongst others that I'm probably not naming. I will tell you that most recently, our congregation has had discussions about adding daycare to that particular location. Beyond that, there's been discussions about potential future coffee shops, sitting down, having book studies, coffee discussions, doing Bible studies. How do we as a council, and I ask this question rhetorically, but as a council, when you have that many different uses of a potential property, and then let me throw in the Newman property that's been added most recently to our Horace proper, that not only has their, their north ex, and obviously their meeting areas, their church, now they're looking at a private school. I, I would ask so many people to, to really put some thought into that, and I do believe we do need to have some additional discussion on this, but I, I think you're right, I think we're heading in the right direction. It's tough for us, based on each individual congregation, to identify what the needs of each individual congregation are, which is why I feel even more strongly about the potential for the sliding scale of a project driver, because it allows our special assessment commission to really take a look at all of those individual, those individual factors, that maybe one church has, maybe another does, and vice versa, if business is correct. I'll let the fire go.
Thank you.
So, so with that being said, I, I think that we have our jobs cut out for us, right? But in order to be fair, you're correct, and it may not be fair to lump everyone in a single category, but for simplicity's sake, that's where we're starting. And then we're going to take a look at this over time, and I like Chris Mack's idea of saying, hey, let's take a look at this and let's determine what makes sense. Now, where things don't necessarily fall where they want, I could care less, because the city makes the determination, right? We decide what these levels are and things of that nature, we want to be fair, but we're also not gonna be bent over. So I will be clear about that, that we're gonna do our best to be in line with other communities, that's why we're having these discussions, but we're also gonna make sure that costs are covered when these developments come in. I open the floor to any of my neighboring council members to expand on those thoughts.
It's harder to put the genie back in the bottle, though, after you've drawn and delineated a line. You, you continue to talk about, well, someday we can change this. You know how hard it is to change after you've already declared something. So I, I just want to underscore, I believe, and it's not congregation by congregation or ecclesiastical body by ecclesiastical body, it's churches, worship, whatever, I think, should be delineated and separated, instead of just, we have nowhere else to put it, so let's just throw it in there for now, and maybe someday we can separate it. So, and I submit that respectfully, truly.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate, sir, we appreciate your comments, thank you.
Sarah, I do, I, I agree with everything you said, Sarah. Do you, um, what, I mean, I guess, do, do you like the three categories for simplicity's sake with the discretion of the driver at the special assessment committee level?
Personally, I think we have to start somewhere. I, I do agree with the, the former gentleman's comment, that once you open the can of worms and stop to put the genie back in the bottle, he's not wrong. But in order to get this to where it needs to be, it maybe has to be a process of continuous improvement.
The initial was that there, all other was two, and we moved away from that because of wanting probably commercial. But actually, I think, Sarah, at the meeting, you had talked about just placing commercial and schools under the, I have your load factor. I don't think you ever mentioned putting churches in that category. You never mentioned churches as being a larger burden on infrastructure.
That's correct. I, I believe that churches are traditionally a lesser burden. Your traditional church, like this gentleman's talking about, with, you know, one service a week and, and those types of things, as they get started, is traditionally a lesser burden. When you start getting into the multitude of additional activities, is where that discretion is needed, I feel.
I mean, I, I mean, I would, I personally would be fine with churches being at the, at the, at the two instead of the three. You have, you listed it out here as public. You put parks, ponds, emergency services, lift stations. You know, churches are nonprofit, they strictly run on their congregation. The funds that come in from the, the, the people that go there. So I wouldn't be opposed to putting churches in the public category here, because they are serving the people as well as these emergency services, the parks, the ponds. I would be fine with moving them as well. Um, I guess I'll leave open discussion.
I agree with you, I would also, but I almost missed the situation where all other was two, just to encourage a grocery store and just other businesses to come out and plant roots. But if we're not willing to do that, I would agree that at least we should put churches at the two.
Anyone else?
Stephanie, I haven't heard her comments.
I mean, I, I share your thoughts, Sarah. I guess I don't know how you feel about that. I, I mean, I don't feel super strongly about it either way, but the, the arguments that you made, Sarah, I agree with them. I'm, I'm more leaning towards leaving it in, if we're doing a one, two, three, I am more leaning, leaning into leaving it in a three. But what do you think, Sarah? For, for the...
I'm waiting, I, I'm waiting the discussion here, and it's, it's a tough call, so it might be a compromise, and that compromise might be a two and a half. Uh, that I don't know, that's something we have to put some additional discussion and some additional time and thought into. I, I do agree with the gentleman that we, we should take a look at that a little more closely. I will say that I like the idea, particularly with the driver of a sliding scale, and I don't want to limit it just to point five or one. I want that sliding scale to be able to go from, you know, zero to two, maybe even three. I, I don't know what that is at this point today, but I will tell you that there needs to be enough flexibility to allow for all of these different circumstances.
So something I do want to point out is, the more you have a sliding scale with a project driver concept, the more difficult it is going to be for the city to provide estimates. And that is something that we do face a lot of challenges with, criticisms, criticisms and stuff from lot owners, even like dealing with, you know, people that are wanting to buy a lot. We can't, we can't drill down. If you have, say, a sliding scale of zero to two with the load factoring, there's no way I could give an accurate estimate, you know? And with this layout that we have, the proposal for you guys, if you have, you know, sliding scales, some, but it's not a lot, we could give a range of where we anticipate it. But once you start getting greater on that sliding scale, you start minimizing the accuracy, or reducing the accuracy of any estimates that we could provide you, so.
Well, in that, in that particular case, then you give a minimum and a maximum.
Yeah, and that's what we do right now, and we get quite a few complaints about that, so.
Okay, so for tonight's purposes, um, I need us to determine for the local improvements, if that is acceptable, the proposed situation for handling the regional improvements, that can be further discussion if we need to, for our special assessment commission to move forward with what is currently on their plates coming up. We need to make a decision on the local improvements, or local improvements. And if we want, we can, uh, make our first attempt at our regional improvements, if you want, or we can, uh, move that can down the road if we want to have further discussion on that. But I need something for at least our local improvement assessments.
I, I don't have any issues with our local improvement policy.
We're moving the load factoring.
Correct, just doing the front footage, just what's listed here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I personally don't have any concerns with the local improvement portion of the policy.
Okay. So do you want to have an attempt at the regional one? Do we want to put something in place right now and talk about it further? Or do we want to wait on that and add that in a later point in time?
I mean, I'm, I would be prepared to make a motion tonight on the regional, if you guys were inclined to do that. If you want to wait, I'm fine with waiting as well.
Go ahead and make your motion, let's see where, let's see where the chips fall.
So.
Well, for discussion after the motion, then I'll let Brett and talk here now, hang on a second.
I would just encourage, if you are, it would help us at the staff side for upcoming districts for estimates. The sooner we do have low, street use load factoring, the sooner we could give estimates. You know, like earlier tonight, we were talking about ninth continuation. That project's been on the back burner right now, but I could give more accurate information. We're able to continue to give it better information for that, the sooner we have that. So I just want to stress that, and as we, we have discussed earlier tonight, we can al, we can also revisit it too, just like we are, when the council approved the policy initially, they approved it, acknowledging also that we're, it's not going to be perfect, we need to do updates, or we need to make revisions, and that's something we need to keep in mind too, so, yeah.
So my motion would be, for the regional aspect, would be to move the churches into the public portion, um, with a three unit per acre, times acres, times the two load factor, and to incorporate a sliding scale for a project driver from zero to one.
Okay, do we have any discussion on the motion?
And do you want to address local?
Local, I like what I see, so.
To remove, to remove load factoring from local.
And to remove the load factoring from the local. That would be my motion.
Do we have discussion on the motion?
I like your range, zero to one, I think that seems appropriate. One, going from point five to one on some of these new lots was a thousand dollars more. I mean, it is pretty significant, so going up to two or something seems like quite a bit. Zero to one does seem.
I, I can support the sliding scale zero to one, I can support the local. I will, I will go with the majority on the church. I think that our, I think that our categories are based on use, and it may not be the popular opinion, but I do still think church probably falls closer to the three than it does the two, but I'll go along with the majority on it. I don't have super hard feelings either way on it, but when you're looking just at use, that's where my, that's where my thought is. I don't have super hard feelings either way on it, but when you're looking just at use, that's where my, that's where my thoughts go.
Sarah?
I'm chewing on this. I, I, I think we're situated on the local improvements. I think that the sliding scale, I could live with a zero to one. I'd like to see a little more flexibility. But I could live with it to start under the guise of obviously continuous improvement. I, I, I don't know if I agree that the churches fall a hundred percent in with public works just because of the volume of people. Parks, you know, public works, things of that at a two, commercial at a three. I really see that more at a middle road and I would propose a two and a half.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second your motion.
But Naomi's motion now is church added two.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I, I like, I like, I like the idea of a, of a separate category for churches. But I think it gives us more flexibility down the road.
I do too.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
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 Okay, we have a tie. I'll break that tie. I'll go ahead and say aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to number sixteen, public meeting facility. Brenton, go ahead.
So I'll take this, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll try to be as brief as possible. Obviously, the city had conversations about moving locations for a temporary meeting location along Seventeen, shops at Horace. So I reviewed, Brent provided the lease agreement for that facility. And then also the standard form of agreement between owner and design builder, which is essentially a fit up agreement for that facility. I will say it's the longest lease agreement that I have ever reviewed.
It was long.
It was very long.
Yeah, so I reviewed it and then I also had our lead attorney and our real estate department review it. And so both of us had red lines for the agreement. We have not presented our red lines to the property owner yet for their review. I think for the most part, there, there are revisions that we can work through with them. But we wanted to keep this process moving along because I know that the city would like to consider that, that space as an option for additional space for the city and for these meetings. So that being said, if the council desires, it can approve these agreements, condition on our office working with the builder to get the revisions made. I don't want to go through all these agreements right now. It's just too much. So if you guys have any questions, I can certainly answer those, but.
I did re- I did review it.
Did you actually?
I did.
I did too.
It's, it's, it's a lot.
It took me like half an hour.
It was a long read.
That's it?
Well.
She's scammed.
I mean.
There's no way.
I did not. I mean, I did. I sat there for a half hour, forty-five minutes and.
Yeah, so, so I will say, I will say like the, for the most part, like the lease agreement itself, there's, there's stuff that we do need to make changes to. The, the fit up agreement, we need information from them. You know, that, that's missing the details to it.
And those are items we sit down with them and iron out and go, okay, this is what we're expecting, so. That isn't uncommon. It's just that we have the template of the agreement and then we go and mold it. That's what Luke's talking about.
And, and if it works with the council too, if we get these revisions made to these two agreements after conditional approval, we'll update in two weeks or on August fifth is your next meeting. So hopefully by then we'll have more of that information that's needed and that we can fill you in on that.
So action tonight, you want us to conditionally approve or what do you want from us?
Yeah, I would just approve contingent on legal working through any revisions with the property owner.
Okay, do you have any questions still?
I don't have any.
No.
I don't.
Sarah, do you have any questions?
No issues, thank you.
Okay.
So I do have one more part, just to make sure council is understanding the cost side of it. Just making sure we have budget boundaries to stick within.
Okay, so you want enough for boundaries?
Yeah.
I thought we decided that at last.
We, we talked about boundaries there, but I don't believe we have any action tied to that. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page of the boundaries there. And then if it does go above that or it's looking like it'll go above it, then we come back to council for any adjustments necessary. So when it comes to outfit, I will work with Councilman Earl Landstrom directly and Mayor Trudeau since that's, Councilman Earl Landstrom's portfolio. Overall rent, rent, the dollar amount comes in just under a hundred twenty thousand dollars. I'll just say a hundred twenty thousand, that's annual. It's a five-year agreement. Construction fit up, the cost estimate from the property owner, they have it just a hair under four hundred twenty thousand. However, with a five-year agreement, they give a forty dollar per square foot fit up allowance. Comes in at just over a hundred seventy thousand. So the remaining cost is at two hundred fifty. Hard asset, the construction fit up, let's go to two hundred eighty thousand. And then if it goes above that, obviously, we're going to keep council price of what's going on. But if it goes above that, we'll keep you posted also. But that's our boundary we wanted to stick with. And then the other fit up, so things like taking the projector, moving that over there, any of our items here at the fire hall, remove them and then outfit or put the fire hall back to previous condition. If we need doing TVs, chairs, conference tables, things like that. We're saying a budget for that one of up to a hundred thousand. And then if it is different, we'll keep you appraised also. The reason I say a hundred is if we have to buy new tables and chairs, like a conference room table and chairs for a conference room, desks or tables for where council sits and staff sits, like where we have these table, full of tables with the table closet room, it adds up. So that's where I'm coming from is just making sure that we could outfit it properly for our, our needs and uses, so. Yep. But I just want to touch base on that, not to hijack that, the agreement side of it, but this does play a role within the agreement, so, yep. And the construction fit up and then the other fit up, those are really the initial costs. They're not ongoing over and over, so your rent is the ongoing. Yep. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions now, Brenton?
No questions.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease and fit up agreement contingent upon legal final review. Lucas, that sounds good?
Legal revisions with the property owner.
Contingent upon legal revision. Is that all you need?
For my part, and then not to exceed the, the numbers that Brent provided.
Okay, and then not to exceed numbers for rent fit up. And what are we calling the third category?
Honestly, I just labeled it other fit up. I don't know if that's the proper labeling of it, but.
Furnishing.
Furnishing, yeah.
Okay. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Got the engineering report. We don't have Jim here, but we got Eric, so let's see what you got.
We do. So I guess construction project status update, usually the first meeting of the month. There's more of an in-depth update, but I can quickly just go through these other projects as best as possible. North to south, Deer Creek Estates, second and third, talked about that. Just had the bid opening, Sixty Fourth Avenue, park construction. They've been stripping topsoil out there, so things we need to go on and on soon. Sixty Sixth Street, KPH. Leave all the pavement, all the curb and gutters in. Aside from just the hand ports for the intersections, whatnot, and sidewalk, still progress, I believe. Sixty Fifth Avenue, J. R. Hertie, that's the water and sewer project, really small. Pre-con, I think scheduled for this week. What else? Lot of contractors in that neck of the woods. Let's see, we got Rivers Edge, second addition, all the curb and gutter is in except for Seventy Eighth Street. That's the main concrete road, north to south of Seventy Sixth. So pavement, they requested blue tops on that, so pavement's going to follow up shortly. Concrete second, we're in punchless status. Sixty Third Street, just a few finishing touches basically. Topsoil is coming in, see that lighting's already in, pavement markings coming shortly, so. Wall Avenue, west, the kind of same status as Sixty Sixth Street. We've got the main pavement, curb and gutter, all that in, just some hand ports in the intersections that remain. So, and then, am I missing anything? Any questions?
Uh, do you know anything about the county's progress on Seventeen and Fourteen since they're, they, they just started laying blacktop today on Fourteen?
Sure. I don't have a good update on that.
Do we have timeline once and be done?
I do not. But we can certainly provide one.
Okay. So I got, anybody else got any questions?
Thanks, Eric.
Hey Brent. Hey. First thing I had is North Dakota League of Cities listening session is Wednesday, three P M in Cassleton. If you'd like to attend, please let me know as soon as possible. That's where League of Cities, the director Matt Gardner, I believe Stephanie Dassinger typically come out. They'll go to each region across state and hear of any issues, concerns that cities may have and also legislators may be there to talk about any items that are on their mind for upcoming legislative actions. So if they do ask the RSVP, if you do want to attend, please let me know so tomorrow so I can get the RSVP sent to League of Cities right away. The other item I have is budget discussions. I'll be reaching out, well, when I've talked to, I believe, which council member a little bit of any concerns you have, but I will also be touching base with you of any more concerns you have and start going over a draft budget, just for general feedback. Jeff was looking forward to sitting down with me for hours on budget, you know. He's already served a little bit of time towards it, so. But anyways, we do have that right around the corner. We'll see next month, just so you know, upcoming steps. I'll be asking for just general feedback. I'll probably be seeking to do a workshop towards end of July here, if we could get to work out with the council. That workshop, we'll be able to dive into the budget if we need, you know, where are we necessary and we could go through what we have for a drafted up proposal. Early August, we need to set a preliminary budget. The big thing on preliminary budget is recap for some. Rachel, this will be one for you and we'll go over budget details soon. Is you're setting what used to be referred to as mill rate or your taxes cap. So general feedback I've had overall has been like to keep the rate the same, which that's where staff has been targeting, is to try to keep that rate the same. Once we set our preliminary budget, that rate, that amount that we plug in our draft preliminary budget can't change. We, it can't, well, it can't go up. I'm going to correct myself. It cannot go up. It could stay the same or go down. So that's the big significance within the preliminary budget. A lot of times, there's some adjustments within that preliminary budget to the final budget. But your tax rate or amount isn't, you know, may be reduced if the council chooses to do that. So those are upcoming steps. Like I said, preliminary budget is in August. Final budget, I believe, is in October. So we'd have budget hearing in early October for that one. So, yeah, those are the items I have.
Are we good?
Yep.
Okay, so for our portfolio reports, I do have to schedule a meeting with Fire yet for this week. I believe you said Wednesday was open for you. Is that right, Brent?
I'll double check time. It's, it should still be, but.
I did forward you the invite to Metropod, Stephanie?
Yep.
Okay, I might join that one.
And I could, I could attend it for this week. I believe I could attend it and then we'll do orientation with Stephanie.
Well, I've been starting to forward you the invites. Other than that, I got my first meet and greet with all the press last week. We'll try to keep that to a minimum. And that's about it that I have. I have a lot of meetings with Brenton coming up here and that should be it for this time. And I'll have a longer report for our next meeting. That's all. Naomi? Oh wait, we got Sarah online. Sarah, you got a, a report for us?
No, just construction season, it's busy, busy, busy. I was pleased with the most recent bid results that came in. Thank you, Eric, for reporting on that. And very pleased with getting our bombing portfolio situated, so thank you all. I don't have any other updates at this time.
Okay, Naomi, what do you got?
Well, I think council's going to have to have a discussion about the Adelman's addition and the drainage. Just to kind of get you guys up to speed, I've had a couple of residents reaching out to me regarding the drainage issue. And Jim and Brenton gave me a couple different options available that would be more or less a Band-Aid for part of the development. Now, the conversations that I've had with this resident, she's fully aware that it's not a full encompassing developmental fix. I did explain to her that if we were to fix the entire issue, that would most likely have to be an assessment. We create a district, go through the whole entire process like we normally do. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but that area was, had some issues from the get-go with the drainage. I don't think it was properly, what's constructed the way it should have been, I guess, maybe for lack of better words. So I'm just wondering what our options can be to help these people. One of the options that Brent had, Brent and Jim had proposed would be a cost of like ninety-seven thousand dollars. It was just going to be a quick inlet on the Adelman Way, I believe is the street name, Sarah. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope, nope, you're right on.
Okay. And, you know, in talking with Jim, he is worried that there might, you know, it's not a full solution. So the residents would have to understand that that is, it's, it's just, it's not going to alleviate every single issue. Some of the concerns that city staff has brought to my attention would be, well, what about the other residents on the other part of the development? How are they going to feel if we're just focusing on one area of town? I'm just kind of wanting to brainstorm with you guys on how we can address this, maybe get them a little bit of relief, whether that's cleaning out the ditches. Because to my knowledge, after the construction of that road, there was a lot of debris that has gone into those drainage ditches that are, it's not flowing. It's, it's, I mean, that would be something that we would have to maintain, you know, probably yearly, I don't know. Doing part of a, a Band-Aid to get by on that one side and then possibly thinking of another option for the other side, maybe when the east, on the east side, there's that other development going in. I don't know. I need your guys' help. I need brainstorming. I need to know what your thoughts are. Because this development has felt like they're getting the runaround and they, they want a solution. They want to try to work with us to come up with some kind of. and they, they want a solution, they want to try to work with us to come up with some kind of, um, way that we can help them, and I would like to see what your guys' thoughts are. Um, I know it's a lot of information to take during a portfolio, um, but it's the only opportunity that I can get to visit with you all, um, so I'm open to suggestions. Um, are you guys open to doing this one inlet possibly, um, you know? I don't know, what are your thoughts? What?
I would have to see, uh, yeah.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I, I want to chime in here, Naomi reached out to me, and this has been an, an ongoing issue for some time, as, as you all know. I have neighbors in this development that have been struggling, and we've proposed some options in the past, um, they didn't fly, we've looked at Band-Aids, we've cleaned out ditches, I can't tell you how many times. This is an ongoing problem and it's getting worse. And I, I will say that, um, there were some things that happened, obviously years ago, since the past, again, that shouldn't have, that have led to some difficulties with water backup on homeowners properties, uh, to the point of some of it getting so bad that it flooded basements and things of that nature. With the most recent construction on sixty-six, there has been an awful lot of sediment that has been carried into those ditches and has plugged, it could worsen up again. Uh, I've spent the last several weeks with residents, again, having discussions, monitoring all of this, and I, I see some options, uh, Naomi and I talked about the possibility of looking at one inlet to address the most immediate concern, which is some backing up on the south end of the property. Uh, but long-term, guys, there's going to be, uh, additional inlets that are needed, and I, I will tell everyone, this development was constructed without curb and gutter, right? Um, I know I, I moved in, in twenty sixteen, several residents that are complaining where they're even before me. Um, and it's not necessarily, uh, something that I'm dealing with on my property, but several are, and it's something that is of significant concern. Uh, and it's not going away, it's getting worse, cattails are growing, drains are backing up, people are getting high, high water levels, cell pumps are burning up. It's a problem, and it has been for some time. Um, what we're looking at, and, and the preliminary discussion we had, um, I realize that Jim and Brenton have sat down and they've been working on a plan, but, uh, Band-Aids aren't the ultimate fix, it might buy us a little time, and this inlet is exactly that, it would buy us a little time to come up with a more permanent solution as the development to the north and the development to the east fill out, right? Um, I can tell you that obviously the residents are opposed to assessments, however, we're open to solutions, and there's additional discussion that that needs to be had there. Um, this inlet is, in my eyes, phase one of two of correcting the issues that this development is having. Um, if this would have been done right in the first place, I think that a lot of this could have been alleviated. However, that's got to be the case on almost all of what we deal with since the past, right? So, at this point in time, what can we do to make it better? What can we do to minimize the amount of maintenance that's going to be required on, on behalf of public works? And what can we do long-term are the things that we're looking at, um, to see what could potentially provide benefit, not only to this neighborhood, but future neighborhoods that will be funding up to or adjoining this particular area. So, uh, with that, Rachel, I'll give you the floor for your comments, and then we can have some further discussion.
No, I mean, I was basically going to say that I would just defer to engineering and, and you, Sarah, people who live there and who know what solutions are. So, are you guys okay if I put the proposed drain, um, on the agenda for the next agenda that Jim and Brenton went over with me? Um, we'll invite the neighborhood, um, they can go over the project. We can discuss what we're going to do after that, moving forward, on how we can alleviate the rest of the neighborhood. Are you guys okay with that?
I am. In fact, going door-to-door, a lot of people have drainage issues.
Yeah.
It's common around old doors.
Yeah.
I, I think so, I would, I would want to make sure, like you mentioned and Sarah mentioned, I would want to make sure that the residents understand that maybe a little stopgap or small project is not going to address all of their issues. I would want to make sure we're just really clear with them upfront, so that they don't have unrealistic expectations, so. But no, I'm fine having further discussion.
Okay, so Brenton?
Yep.
I want to add this to the next agenda, then, um, and at that time, we can kind of discuss if we would like to, how we would like to move forward with payment of that kind of project. Um, and then the only other thing I said, I had on my list was that I need to connect with Jace. I feel like our meetings have just kind of dropped off a little bit, um, since election time, I guess. So I would like to.
Yeah, we'll have to talk again.
Maybe get back on a regular schedule, um, with everything that we have going on.
Yep.
So, that was about it.
Stephanie?
All right, I'll apologize in advance, I also have an additional issue, but I'm going to go through it really quick, and I just, I feel like there's going to be support for this. So I mentioned to Brenton, I had a couple residents that reached out to me that live on the west side of, uh, sixty-fourth. You know, they're on the detour, they're, they're on the gravel detour route now for CAS seventeen. Um, and they reached out with, uh, and she sent me some pictures that got significant dust issues, as you can imagine, coming down, uh, the gravel road there as the people are detouring around. So, they said last, uh, last year, dust control was put down, and they are requesting if we would consider, um, dust control again, um, for that area. I understand, Brenton, you mentioned, I thought some of that was still coming on, but you said it's all city?
So sixty-fourth Avenue in that area you're referring to is, yeah.
Do you know the area? So, I mean, I don't know if you need to pull it up, but anyway, along and the short of it, I would be in support of that. I don't know if you guys have other questions on it, I think we did it last year. Um, if you want me to forward the email that showed the pictures that she sent to me, I can send that to you. So, and she reached out to me, I didn't have enough time to get it on as an actual agenda item, so I apologize. She reached out to me like Thursday. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, Stephanie, that is the dust trap. I am in favor of providing some relief to those folks, absolutely.
Yeah.
So, one thing I, you know, I just got to remind everybody, just so, say yes, we reminded you, just a reminder, if you haven't worked with the dust controller, or in some areas we've had where once we put dust control, that application, yes, it does help with dust, but your trade-off over, over time can be, not always that can be, where you have pit in and all that. I have to say it for everybody.
We, I mean, we've dealt with this with Wall Avenue.
Yeah.
As long as I disclaimer it for us, so, there, there's trade-offs there.
Do you, do you think if, if there is consensus of council to do it, uh, Eric, what do you think the date, what do you think that the range should be for the road to do the dust control? Do you know what area I'm talking about?
You're talking about like from Greystone East to County Road Seventeen?
Greystone, no, going west to eighty-first.
These, these individual parcels were west of the Greyhawk area.
Between diversion road and?
Yes, between the diversion road and in Greyhawk. I mean, would we want to dust control the whole area from eighty-first east?
I mean, yeah, I don't know how many houses are on that one, the stretch between County Road Seventeen, but, I mean, do you proactively do it?
I don't know.
So that.
Yeah, main thing, I'm sorry, guys, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, maybe you could just pull it up quick, um.
That's not officially the detour route.
No, well, the county claims that their detour route is up to Forty-eighth Street, Forty-eighth Avenue and over, that's what they were talking about earlier tonight. If you were to put dust control down, you know.
Can you zoom in a little?
I, I can see either two, two approaches. One, you could do sixty-four till you get to about eighty-first, or close to the Cheyenne diversion there. That'd be one option. Other one would be put dust control down in, in the proximity of those houses there. So you have it just down maybe half the stretch, so from the Cheyenne.
Maybe eighty-first.
Close to Cheyenne diversion to, uh, basically extends along the property there. You'll see that sometimes out in the country, where you'll see people put dust control down right by a farmstead, but they don't do the whole road. Um, so that'd be question for, for council, is it going to cost a lot more to do the whole stretch versus just a portion? Probably not. We're looking at maybe a couple fifteen, hundred bucks to a couple thousand, under a couple thousand dollars, I believe, or something like that, so.
Do you guys have a preference?
Not just getting a ballpark from past times that we've had put down, but, uh, as for, uh, a question I'd have is, are you just like on sixty-fourth, or are you talking eighty-first also? Your conditions eighty-first are not as good as sixty-fourth.
I guess it just came to me, those were the, the residents that live along sixty-fourth were the ones that brought it to my attention, and so that's why I guess I'm bringing that up for discussion, um.
There's not much on eighty-first, though.
For, for residential.
At this point, so I think.
No, it's just a matter of how, what direction is the wind blowing?
Oh, I see what you're saying, drift, drifting from the west.
Yeah.
Um.
And I would suggest to you, if you're to put down, look at sixty-fourth, and then see if that helps.
Yeah, I think maybe we would start with that.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need, do we need a motion on that?
Either one, so, that, it, it doesn't hurt to just say, do a motion on it.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, to apply dust control, uh, to sixty-fourth Avenue from eighty-first Street to just, um, east of the residences. Is that specific enough or not, along the roadway?
So you want sixty-fourth from the Cheyenne diversion.
I think from the Cheyenne diversion.
It should be where the road right away stops.
To east of those two parcels.
So, if you can see where that parcel stops, it'd be about where the, the white building, the shed is? Yeah, there you go. So it'd be where this public road right away is, begins going east.
Wherever you think a reasonable stopping point for that would be. Uh, that's my motion.
Okay.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Sarah?
Motion carries.
Could we, what do you think the timeframe is on that?
I'll have to check.
Okay, thank you, if you could just, as, as soon as practical, that would be great, thank you. And that's all I have for my portfolio.
Okay, Rachel, what do you got?
Well, I do have a resident that reached out about the fountains in Lost River on the pond. They understand that there's bigger issues with the pond, but the fountains do seem unrelated to those problems, and they seem like, um, well, that they keep, I don't know, but, let's see, let's see. Oh, yeah, okay, since we've built, I think we're the fifth house on the pond, the fount, um, these fountains have gone in, they serve many purposes, circulate the water, um, reduction in algae and corresponding bugs, reduce the amount of noise around the pond. Anyway, just curious if we could perhaps get that going?
Yeah, and I did bring that up at the last meeting, I brought that up, and also the fire hydrant, that's out of commission over in Chestnut. Sorry, didn't mean to derail the portfolio.
I haven't met with Parks yet, um, events, we went to a Bean Day meeting.
Yep, yep, and we're still working on that, we're going to have a subcommittee meeting this Thursday for the car show, which is a Friday night event, so.
Yeah, sounds like there's some volunteers needed and some donors, but, um, yeah, sounds like it's going to be great.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.